Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Arbor Day and Earth Day.
Proclamation, whereas in 1872 Jay Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the city of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2008 by the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, provide wood for our homes, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, and contribute many other benefits, and whereas in 1970 Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth and call it Earth Day, and whereas volunteers from neighborhood schools, businesses, and service clubs will help the city of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day on Saturday, April 28th, by planting street trees in the north Renton neighborhood as well as other plants to enhance and beautify the Renton Senior Activity Center, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2012, to be Arbor Day, Earth Day in the city of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed the 16th day of April 2012, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton. Mr. Beer?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with this proclamation.
It's been moved by Ms. Brier, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with this proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's my pleasure to present this to Terry Flatley.
I wasn't sure if you were here tonight. However, you can tell that Arbor Day, Earth Day is coming by the plants. Thank you, Mayor Law and city council members, for the Arbor Day, Arbor Day, Earth Day proclamation. Renton's urban forestry program is vital to its economy and livability. Our residents indicate the importance of the program demonstrated by the increase in requests for service. For example, in 2008, Renton's first year as a Tree City USA, there were 145 requests for urban forestry services. Today, or in 2011, there were over 680 requests. The city has become known for its progressive urban forestry program because of strong community support, the support of the mayor and city council, and the support from city staff in implementing the urban and community forestry development plan. The city celebrates Arbor Day and Earth Day as a combined event on the last Saturday of April, which is April 28th this year. Because Renton has a formal proclamation and celebration, we have become certified as a Tree City USA community through the Arbor Day Foundation. This year's Arbor Day, Earth Day celebration on April 28th will be held at the Renton Senior Activity Center located at 211 Burnett Avenue North, and I would like to cordially invite all of you and the public to attend. Volunteers will gather to plant 67 street trees in the north Renton neighborhood during a two-hour period on that sunny Saturday morning. In addition, we have flower planting, mulch installation, and other activities planned at the senior center for our younger volunteers and their parents. This project is made possible with the assistance of an urban forestry grant from the Washington Department of Natural Resources and the U.S. Forest Service. Renton qualified for this grant because of the contribution trees provide towards improving water quality and reducing flows into the Cedar River. Pre-registration for the event is encouraged by calling 425-430-6600. In addition, if you are interested in becoming a volunteer for this great project, please register the day of the event at the Senior Activity Center. The schedule for the 7th Annual Arbor Day, Earth Day Celebration includes the registration of volunteers at 9:00, where they will be assigned to work parties, a presentation at 9:30 with Mayor Dennis Law receiving Renton's fourth Tree City USA Award and its second Tree City USA Growth Award from the Washington State Forester. Volunteers dispersed to the work sites at around 10:00. There's a cleanup around 11:30 followed by a lunch put on courtesy of Renton's neighborhood program. This year's event includes the planting of nine different tree species on Wells Avenue North and on North Second Street in front of 49 homes. The tree species such as Vanessa Persian Perodia, Apollo Sugar Maple, and Starlight Dogwood will be planted. Volunteers should wear boots and gloves, and tools are provided by the city's volunteer program. Lastly, the event is sponsored by our -- the event is made possible by our sponsors, Sam's Club, Pacific Plants Incorporated, and Integrity Network Systems. We encourage you to attend, and I hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. Now, can any council member repeat those trees? I would guess not, and I'll tell you, there's nobody I've ever known that knows more about trees and about taking care of the city's interest in trees than Terry. Thank you, Terry, very much. So we have another very exciting presentation, and that -- and this is our Community Services Department that has received a tremendous award. Terry?
Good evening. I'll wait till we get our plants all down here. We don't want to ruin your view here tonight, but you get those to take home, so we hope that you'll plant those in your garden. I encourage you to promote the green in Renton. I am lucky to work in a department where we get to do so many wonderful things, and because of that is one of the reasons we're here tonight. So, my name is Terry Higashiyama. I'm the administrator for the Community Services Department, and I'm fortunate enough to work for the city of Renton with a great staff. Council President Zwicker, council members, we are here with great pride tonight to tell you that we have received our second reaccreditation by national standards for parks and recreation. This is no easy task. There are only two departments that have reached that in the state of Washington. That's us in Bellevue, and we were first, anyway. And there are only 99 parks departments throughout the United States that have reached this standard. A little bit about the standard, it is a national accreditation provided as an assessment tool for parks and recreation agencies. Through compliance with these national standards of excellence, the accreditation assures policymakers, department staff, and the general public that an accredited parks and recreation agency has been independently evaluated against established benchmarks as delivering a high level of quality service. Every park and recreation agency, whatever its focus or its field of operation, is rightfully concerned about with the efficiency, the effectiveness of its operations, and how it manages its resources. With the importance of parks and recreation agencies and services to the quality of life, each agency has an essential role in the lives of people it serves. This capra accreditation is a quality assurance and a quality improvement process that demonstrates our agency's commitment to its employees, to the volunteers that you hear about tonight, to all of our patrons, and to the community, that we are the very best that we can be. While this is a difficult task, the 144 standards make us look at everything we do and make sure that we're doing them the very best. If I could have the community services staff stand that are here tonight, I'd like to acknowledge them. We are a team of 94 full-time employees and sometimes up to 250 seasonal and temporary part-time employees when all of our day camp leaders come on and our lifeguards. But what we have is just people that care about giving back and making sure that you have the best that happens in this city. Now, when you do a project like this, you have to have a very good person that leads it. They have to round all the rest of us up to get in that information about that 144 standards. It doesn't just happen. And Chris Stimson was a lucky choice for doing it this year. She said, "Pick me, I really want to do it." And I said, "Chris, this is the job you're going to love." So I would like her to say a few words because she really led the team and all the other departments that helped us get this done. So I'd like to introduce Chris Stimson, our Recreation Manager.
Good evening. I'd like to personally thank Mayor Law and Jay and Terry for the opportunity. It sounds terrible, but it was really a great experience just career-wise and the ability to work with all the other staff in the different divisions, and I think I'm most proud to work for a city that has such high standards and values, and it was just a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Mayor, if you would come down and receive our plaque and the award. On behalf of the Community Services Department and our joy for giving back to the citizens, we're happy to give you our reaccreditation acknowledgement.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, we can't miss a picture because Chris and I just love that.
Pretty seal.
Yeah, we do.
Back of the computer.
Again, Terry, congratulations to you and your entire staff, and we're really proud of you. It's very nice. Okay, next, we're going to move on to a public meeting where the councils are going to receive a presentation in regards to the potential of moving a ballot measure forward for the library location. So start off with Zeneta Fontas.
Mr. Mayor, if I could quickly, just to remind council, or not so much remind, our intent is, should we -- we can do anything that we want tonight, granted, but the intent was that we'd go through the public meeting, and if we were going to choose to take action and continue forward, ideally, we were looking to do that next Monday during unfinished business, and that's kind of the intent, but obviously, it's flexible, but the intent was to basically discuss things tonight but not necessarily take action. We give it another week to digest, so that's the ultimate goal, but again, we can do anything we want, but that was the intent. Thank you.
Thanks. If you could zoom in on this part. I just want to read it in the back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Zeneta Fontas, Senior Assistant City Attorney. In Larry's absence and at his direction, I have drafted a proposed ballot title, and I apologize, some of what I'm going to present to you tonight is repetitive with the memo that went out in your council packet. I do that because some people in the viewing audience here and some people on the television audience might not have had an opportunity to read that memo, and so I will present some of the thoughts that went into that memo here for you tonight. The question that is before you, not so much that you're deciding it tonight, but that will be presented to you next week, will be whether to present to the King County elections the ballot title that I have drafted for the August 7th ballot. You will also be hearing from Peter Renner tonight and some experts that he has asked to come here and be available to give you information as well as answer questions that you might have. I don't know if Ewan is here in case -- oh, there she is. And Terry Higashiyama are also available in the event that you have questions. So I thought I would take you through a bit of the drafting process that I followed in drafting the ballot measure. A ballot measure, a ballot title, excuse me, has three parts. The legal requirements are that it, number one, be drafted by the city attorney, and as I say, Larry asked me to do that in his absence. The purpose of a ballot title is to identify and contain the essential elements of the measure. It has three parts, the subject statement, a concise description, and a question. Each one of these has a slightly different purpose, but ultimately, read altogether, all three parts are to be, number one, accurate, number two, impartial, and number three, should not create a bias one way or the other. So I started with the subject statement, and I thought of it more like a working title. I wasn't wed to whatever I drafted, I just wanted to give myself some focus. I wanted it to be straightforward. I wanted it to be clear about what the vote was about. So it's the city of Renton vote to select a library site downtown. As I indicated in my memo to you, that wasn't my first choice, but when I went back after all of the other work, I went back and read it and said, "Well, I think we have to massage this a little bit to make sure that we comply with the requirements for what it's supposed to have." It's supposed to identify the enacting jurisdiction, the city of Renton, and it's supposed to, all of this within 10 words, it's supposed to tell the voters what this is all about. So I thought that this was a pretty clear, concise, 10-word statement that identified the city and told the voters what it was about. Then I looked at the question because, from my perspective, that was easier than coming up with the 75-word sentence, so I went to the question next. And again, I gave myself a working question, and again, in an effort to facilitate my drafting the 75-word concise description. There is a statutory requirement for the format that this question can take, and nothing was really a perfect fit. So I did the best I could with the options that the statute gave me and came up with this question and this format. I did look at sample questions from other jurisdictions. I searched through King County, Pierce County, Snohomish County, and Spokane Counties for samples. Again, nothing was right on. Apparently, other jurisdictions don't go to their electorate to inquire about where to place a library or where to place things, so this is kind of a unique question, but there were samples of, there are two measures, choose between, and I thought that that was sufficiently analogous that I used that format. So that is how we got the question here today. And then finally, I turned my attention to the very easy task of coming up with a 75-word concise description. Before I get too far into this discussion, I want you to picture, if you will, a hanging mobile from your ceiling, or the mobile that some people put over their child's crib, so that when you tap one part, the whole thing jiggles. Well, that's how I found myself dealing with this 75-word statement. Every time I tapped one thing, I realized because of context, number of words, whatever, that something else had to change, and that always affected the number of words with which I had to work. The memo I provided you identified, I can't remember how many ideas that I chose to convey to you, suffice to say, if I had known at the beginning of this process that I would be making this presentation tonight, I would have kept better notes. And then, of course, you would have been planning to eat breakfast here tomorrow morning because so many thoughts came and went during this process that it would have just taken too much time to cover them all for you. So I started my process with thinking about what the essential elements were for this ballot title, and the first one seemed to me that we have a situation where we are providing a library pursuant to a contract. Actually, there are two contracts. There was a contract in which -- with which, excuse me, there was a contract we had with KCLS before the annexation. There is the contract that we entered into with KCLS after the annexation in 2011. That is, I provided a copy of that in your packet. If I had been thinking clearly, I would have provided you both, because there are some provisions in that contract that actually identify that there will be a brand-new, brand-spanking-new building at a site other than the site over the Cedar River. That was in a contract before we even annexed to KCLS. So, going back to the essential elements, it seemed to me that the fact that we had a contract with CLS to provide a library in downtown Renton became a critical element or an essential element from my perspective. When drafting, I had to think about how many words I had available to me, so I had to draft in such a way that when I addressed the fact that there was a contract, I couldn't say all of the things that I just said to you. Now, there was this annexation way back when, and before that, we had this agreement, et cetera. There were too many words, and it seemed to me if I put in all of that information, it might confuse the voters into thinking that, why are we voting in the first place? We already voted on this. So, not wanting to confuse that issue, I drafted what I have here. After Renton voters chose to join King County Library System, Renton contracted with KCLS to provide a state-of-the-art library in downtown Renton. That is an accurate statement, and it seemed the most concise way to say it from my perspective. I thought about words such as, after Renton voters elected to annex to King County, King County Library System, I saw an email from Mr. Avery where he proposed something that once again used the word "annex," and I had considered the word "annex," but I also thought that people who haven't really been following this issue very carefully might see the word "annex" and think that they're talking about a land annexation and parcels coming into the city, or the city becoming part of, you know, the land of the city becoming an annexation to something else, and I didn't want to confuse those voters. The people who are up on the issues would know it right away, but the people who haven't been following might not. That could prejudice the vote one way or the other. So I chose not to use the word "annex." I didn't want to talk about the "the" vote in 2010 with too much specificity because I didn't think that that needed to be such a great focus, but I did want the voters to know that there had been a vote, and from that, a contract had followed, and from that, we are in the position we are in today with having to decide where the downtown library is going to be located. The second essential element, in my view, was what kind of library. I've chosen the phrase "state-of-the-art" because frankly, to be 100% accurate, I would have had to have used, I think, about 20 words, consistent with a superior inform, function, and quality of other recently constructed libraries in the King County Library System. This seemed like a very long way to say "state-of-the-art" library, and I think that captured the essence, if you will, of the kind of library that has to be built. The next essential element, in my view, was the cost. You will see that I have drafted this, I've drafted this with a blank as well as an amount, the blank for the amount for the Cedar River location and the $9,300,000 for the location west of the Renton Piazza location. It seemed to me, based on everything I had heard, that cost was a very important aspect of this debate. I have attended only one, maybe two, I guess, council meetings where it was my responsibility to cover the meeting, where these things have been discussed, but I did go back and listen to the council meetings on the Intranet, and it seemed to me, based on the comments that I had heard from the people who took the time to come forward and talk to you in this forum, that cost was a significant factor, and again, would be probably the most significant part of the debate. So I included provision for having the cost of each part of this measure. And again, let me make this observation. From my perspective, given my, not just ethical responsibility, but my statutory duty, because this is a statutorily imposed responsibility on my office, when I'm looking at the numbers, I want to be certain that I can feel comfortable that the number that I put in the blank represents the same kind of message that the number $9,300,000 represents. I don't know whether we can get there. To be candid, I don't know that we're going to get there tonight, I don't know where we're going to go with the numbers from Peter Renner's people and the like, but suffice to say that if this provision stays in, if this language stays in, providing four numbers for either proposition, then we have to be comfortable, I have to be comfortable, that those numbers represent the same kind of message or the same kind of context in order to be fair and impartial.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker?
I don't know if it's appropriate, Zeneta, I'm not trying to get you off course.
You're fine.
So you're talking about the legality and the specific provisions. What if the, with an approximate cost of blank was removed? Does that, under your analysis of the validity of the ballot, does that put that into question? Or is that an option that could be considered? Are you following my question?
Yes, I do. And I, the answer to the question is, is yes, it can come out so long as the approximate cost of $9,300,000 also comes out.
Correct.
It's that mobile again, you tap one side, and you've got to worry about the rest of it dangling, so the way I'm interpreting the question is, how imperative is it that that particular element be included in the 75-word statement? I don't think that that is a legal impediment
Thank you.
to going forward with the ballot title.
Thank you.
Keep in mind that we will also be drafting, it will also fall upon my office, to draft an explanatory statement, which is 200, a whopping 250 words with which to work. I'm not quite sure what I'm going to do with all of that space, but
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Zeneta, one of the things that I would, I think about is the cost, you nail that observation. Cost is important to our residents. That being said, there has been several numbers thrown out, and so, you know, I would really hope to see in that explanatory statement, you know, some clear-cut numbers so that people are making their decision on how they want to vote, and they're using the cost as one of the important factors in terms of how they do that, that they're not hearing multiple voices throughout the community talking about different numbers, that we do give them a number, that we believe is going to be a good number, that is going to be comparable to that same number that we've established for the proposed new site.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but let me try to address it. I don't know that we can ever control people talking about numbers in the public. They're going to sift through whatever information they sift through, and they are either going to poke holes, agree with, whatever, dispute, whatever the right word ought to be, and I don't think we can ever stop that part of that debate. What I do anticipate and hope comes out of this, it was my hope to include it here because when somebody is in the quiet of the voting booth, if you will, whether it's at their dining room table or doing it the old-fashioned way in a voting booth, that's what they're going to read, and so it would be my preference to have it here, but only if, but only if, we can have numbers that are impartial, level, unbiased, mean the same context, et cetera. If we can't have them here in that context, then we're looking at, we're looking at having to try to explain it, whether it's in the explanatory statement or in the pro-con statements, and I will speak to that here in a few minutes. Okay? The fourth essential element for this proposal, this might not have been an essential element in a different setting, but because of how we ended up here today, it seemed to me that there's considerable confusion about the existing library and what's going to happen to the existing library if the voters choose the downtown, for the downtown library, the site west of the Piazza. And again, that comes out And again, that comes out of a lot, some history, things I've read. I've learned a lot in the past week and a half about what has happened and things that have been said. And as a consequence, I think it's an important, or an essential element of this particular proposal, that we identify what is going to happen with the existing library if, in fact, the Piazza site is the one that is selected. I've put this in the memo. You've heard me refer to what some people might call the Big Five site. You've heard me refer to it as the west of the Piazza site. And the reason, again, for the viewing public and for the people here who have not read my memo, the reason I've chosen that is because, again, it is a geographical location. It is a physical location. And again, I'm just trying to be unbiased. I'm trying to be clear. If I use "Big Five site," people think it's the Big Five building, when in fact, that's not the case. If I try to say something like "formerly the Big Five site," but it's going to be a new building, that's too many words, but it's accurate. So, again, think of that mobile. I keep tapping one side of the mobile, and the whole thing shakes. And so, I decided that in an effort to conserve words and yet be fair in how I propose to speak about the existing library over the Cedar River, and I thought about that, and I said, "Well, that's a physical location over the Cedar River, hence my reference to west of the Piazza instead of Big Five." So, after addressing the essential elements, I looked at some actual wording, and I was doing this throughout, as I say, many more ideas than those which I've identified in my memo passed through my brain. Again, I was just trying to look for an accurate, balanced, not misleading, unbiased approach to this. I avoided the use of the word "new" because I didn't want to imply that we were going to completely demolish the building over the Cedar River. I thought that that would be biased against that part of the measure. For a similar reason, I didn't use "construct," because once again, I thought people would say, "Well, we already have a building. Why are we going to construct it? Does that mean they're going to tear it down?" And so, those kinds of things pass through my mind, because I didn't want it to be biased. I also thought in terms of how much specificity I would use when talking about building a new library, whether it was going to be full reconstruction, partial reconstruction, and those kinds of things, it was just too many words. Just too many words. So, I had to try to be balanced about how much specificity I was going to use when talking about the Cedar River site and the west of the Piazza site. And so, I came up with things like, "The library will be located either the existing library location over the Cedar River or west of the Renton Piazza." And that's kind of where it ended up. I think I've gone through, because I've kind of jumped into some of the other comments that I had prepared, so I think I've covered the things I was expecting to cover with you. If you have any questions of me...
Mayor?
Go ahead and finish your sentence, Zeneta.
If you have any questions of me, I'll gladly answer them before I turn it over to Peter Renner and some of the people he has brought with him tonight to address the numbers issue.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes. A couple of questions in the comment. One of the questions would be, you mentioned that on the first page of the memo we received, that we need to get a resolution and ballot titled "King County Election" and sufficient time for them to put the paperwork through the process. And some concerns that it is a possibility that if we fail to do that, that this could end up on the November ballot.
That is correct.
Which creates, you know, in my mind, you know, understanding of some additional cost. It looks as if there's some additional, maybe $253,000 in architectural and design costs, should that happen. So, my question was, what would or could cause a, and result in a delay of our getting this to the ballot in time?
Well, first and foremost, what could cause a delay is if next Tuesday, excuse me, next week, Monday night, you choose to not put it on the ballot for August 7th. For whatever reason, you don't want to put this ballot title on the ballot. And that could be because you're not comfortable with the numbers, but you don't want to take out the "with an approximate cost of" type language. I mean, we could get by the numbers issue for the ballot title by taking those two provisions out. Another possibility would be if you took a lot of energy to try to completely rework this ballot title, because you didn't like it, and you gave me direction and said, "Well, Zeneta, we don't like this, 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 and this, and this." Despite the fact that it is my task, it's a statutory task, obviously, I would take your input, but that would slow down the process. So, anything that gets us passed next Monday night without a resolution with a ballot title in it would delay this. Anything could do that.
Okay.
A lawsuit could delay it.
Okay. So, that brings up my other comment that I have regarding the verbiage. I just can't, had some issue with the description of the new site being referred to as "west of the Piazza" for several reasons. The verbiage description, to me, does not explicate, make plain, or clear as to the exact location. We've had requests, several requests from petitioners, to place a sign or banner on that location, because even they understand the impact that the exact known location has on voters who may not be as well as informed. They may not know, when you say "west of the Piazza," you know, I know people that are compass incompetent, you know. They, you know, you say west, east, north, south, and they look at you with a stare, you know, and they don't, but you've got to give them more information. And so, I have concerns about changing the description of the Big Five name site to the west of the Piazza site for that reason. I think there's a number of people that, you know, why would we try to retrain everyone to identify? And clearly, they know the Cedar River site, but where I'm going here is that, you know, if I'm someone who, as you put it, in your words, were people who haven't been following this issue, may get confused by the word "annex." Well, I would argue that people who haven't been following this issue may get confused by the term "west of the Piazza." But if you say "Big Five location" or the commonly understood verbiage, that makes it crystal clear. And now, I've got a picture in my mind, and I can make a decision whether or not I want to vote for the library over the river or a library at the former Big Five site.
The contract, and I'm looking for the provision, the contract actually has an address of that location on South Third. 508 South Third Street, which might be, I have to count the words, but it might be, and if we take out the approximate amounts, I could use the actual street address, 508 South Third Street.
I would say that the Big Five would be more descriptive than the address, since we're not using the address of the Cedar River Library.
I understand that. I did think of that, as I indicated before. I think it is potential confusion for people to think about the Big Five, thinking that it's going to be the same building. Now, we're going to have to somewhere identify that it's not going to be the same building. It's going to be a brand-new building.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brer.
I guess my concern would be more with the Big Five company and the fact that they've relocated, and yet, we're using their name in something that doesn't deal with them at all. And so, that concerns me, that we would be engaging their name in a ballot title when there's, where they really have no place.
I hadn't considered that, but it would be something that we would have, it would be a loop that we would have to close. And whether or not we could close it in time, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I want to understand one thing, and if I understood what you said right, is that you have the statutory responsibility to write this ballot title, and as such, you end up being the, I mean, you're taking input, but you become the one that gets to make the final decision.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I guess I would also say to remember that there will be a campaign, if we put this on the ballot, there will be a campaign for each one.
Yes.
And the campaign is to educate the voters. So, I'm okay with west of the Piazza for some of the other reasons. I agree with using the Big Five name. Seems like we'd almost need to get permission from their trademark. So, that's what has been going through my mind, is that hopefully, there will be some educating of the voters. Granted, it's a short amount of time, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Swisher.
Thank you. Zeneta, thank you for efforts on this. I appreciate it. I know it hasn't been easy. Couple of things that just kind of pop out to me before we get to the actual numbers. I see that, you know, the Cedar River and then the west of Renton Piazza, those are descriptive, non-specific addresses. So, clearly, you could yank library location over Cedar River and say 200 mil, and you could say 508 Third.
That's correct.
I don't think it quite paints the picture that I think all of us would like to see in a ballot description, but that's one easy solution, one clear solution. And I kind of, again, I do want to hear from Peter and everybody else on the numbers, but I don't think it necessarily would be a bad idea as a council to kind of take the straw poll about, "Do we want the numbers in there at all?" Because I personally kind of see that there may be quite a bit of a debate tonight that could basically be removed from tonight's debate about what those numbers are and focused more specifically in the explanatory statement, the 250 words, and then pros and cons statements. So, I'm just kind of curious on where the other council members are on how necessary it is to have that specific number in there, seeing our attorney has said that it's not a requirement. And so, I'm just kind of curious where my colleagues are at on that before we delve into the numbers and the level of debate. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
If I could speak to that, thank you, Mr. Swisher. Also, a hearty thank you to Ms. Fontas. I can tell that you did really agonize over this and take it very seriously. And I think it's a great process that you would come forward and share your thought process, and it's a great starting point. I think if we end up modifying it, it's probably not going to take a lot of modification to make people relatively satisfied with it. So, thank you very much for that. I do think that the numbers issue is the issue, and it's because we're trying to get this onto the ballot quick, because we have a deadline. So, I think this would be, it would be better if it had numbers, but I just can't imagine that we achieve a consensus on those numbers in the time needed to get it on this ballot. And so, that leaves, the only other option is to push it out to the November ballot, but that has a lot of consequences, too, and causes us to potentially spend more money that we shouldn't. So, you know, with regard to the suggestion, I would support Mr. Swisher's idea initially. I think, you know, it's a public meeting, so I guess we're going to hear from the public, too, but that's kind of where I'm starting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brer.
So, Randy, are you saying that you don't want numbers anywhere in either the ballot description either?
If I may, good question. No, I think what I'd, what I'd like to see is that we go forward with, and it's a little bit risky, so we'd all have to recognize this, but we'd go forward with the ballot without numbers, and then with the material that comes out in four weeks, the City Attorney's Office has to produce the explanation...
Explanatory statement.
That's going to ultimately go into the voters' pamphlet.
So, it would be in the 200 words and...
Yes.
Later date? Okay.
Yeah. And that's, you know, even that, I see as a challenge to get from here to there to everybody's satisfaction. But, you know, it's a lot better than trying to do it tonight.
Yeah, if I may, you know, I would be fine with that. I just think that it's going to be real important for the voter to make their decision based on having access to the numbers. So, I certainly would want it to be in the pros and cons. I would want it to at least be in the statement from the city.
If I may, the purpose of the explanatory statement, the 250-word statement, is to explain to the voter the effect of the vote. And so, if we don't have the numbers in this concise description, it would be my opinion that we have to have them there, because somewhere, I mean, the purpose of that statement is to explain to the voter the effect of the measure. And if the cost to the taxpayer is not an effect of the measure, I don't know what is. So, it's going to have to be somewhere. If it's not here, then it must be there.
So, is Mr. Renner up next?
Peter?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Can I ask one more question? So, we've talked about just about every element of your 75 words, and which seem to be holding up pretty well, actually, I'll point out. And there was one last part of that, Ms. Fontas, that a suggestion was made by Stuart Avery in a letter on the final sentence, which actually may be now, if we take, if cost comes out, maybe it even gets easier. But his suggestion was that we change the last few words slightly so that it would say, "Renton will keep the existing library building for alternative public use." And he actually said it additional cost, but if cost figures are coming out. And I like the "for alternative public use," because I think there is a risk that, as this reads now, it might give the impression that it would be a third library location.
And I would agree. I liked that word "alternative." And I'm back to my 75-word mobile. If I can figure out how to, I liked that observation of his. And I haven't wordsmithed it. I like that.
Sure.
And I didn't know if I should keep the word "future" for "alternative public use" and take out the word "future," then I keep my 75-word mobile sound. But I wasn't sure if I should keep the word "future" or not. But I do like the word "alternative."
Senator Valine, yeah, we could see where we end up with whether the cost is in there or not, and that would give you some...
Right. And then, if in fact, the cost stays in, if something happens between now and next Monday, and we can come up with numbers where we're comparing apples to apples, and that stays in, it isn't just a matter of the extra words that he proposed, because he proposed a whole rewrite. Well, not a whole rewrite. He rewrote part of it, the first and the last sentence. My concern about adding "for extra cost" made it sound like there was only going to, there was, that that extra cost was only attendant to, was only attendant to if the Piazza site prevailed. And I'm not sure that's an accurate statement. And so, based on that, I thought, "Well, that could prejudice in favor of the Cedar River site. It could prejudice against." So, while that might sound like a fair thing to do, I'm supposed to write it so that it doesn't prejudice. So, I thought about that language, but, and so discarded it for that reason. And then, I'm thinking if we do take out the cost item, then that language really is superfluous.
Yeah.
And confusing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Swisher.
Yeah, Zeneta, just along those same lines, I kind of get into the confusion, and not making that extra step, but existing library for future use, and we're talking about the terms, existing library building is, to me, a lot clearer than existing library.
And in fact, that is...
That's the confusion I see, is that it appears to be the third library.
Yes.
And so, I just, I mean, if we get back to redrafting, you understand our concern.
I think, I think I do. You're saying that if I use the word "library building," it makes it clear that it's the building that's going to get repurposed, not the fact that it's going to be a library.
That's where my confusion...
Right. And in fact, in fairness to Mr. Avery, he proposed the word "building."
Exactly.
Yeah, that's good.
Good. Mr. Renner?
And Don had something to say.
Oh, did you?
Well, I just think, solve the issue of leaving...
Well, I just think to solve the issue of leaving the cost in the ballot title, I'm sensing from my chair here that the consensus would that the cost figures come out and that we handle it in the 250-word. And if that's so, then I mean.
Okay, well, there's a lot of heads nodding that way, so.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Renner?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President Swicker and council members. I am Peter Renner, the city's facilities director. There's been a lot of public interest in the way the cost estimates have been developed for both of the downtown library sites, existing library over the river and the Piazza site on South Third, 508 West Third, South Third, the old big five building, as you will. The background for the cost estimates was a site feasibility study performed by this for the city by the architectural firm of Methune Architects in 2010. A real estate firm was also engaged to locate and consider possible sites, whether they were on the market or not. Methune reviewed sites for both the downtown and Highlands libraries, and there were six finalists for the downtown location. Methune has experience working with KCLS, so they had familiarity with their needs and site selection criteria. Except for the existing library in the pavilion site, all of the finalist properties were either vacant or occupied by buildings that would be demolished. In order to properly analyze the relative costs for each site, it was necessary for Methune to commission a cost estimate. They chose the Robinson Company for this work. For bare land, the cost was simply listed as 15,000 square feet times an average price for a new KCLS library based on recent construction costs plus the cost of the land. For sites with existing buildings, the estimate also included demolition of those buildings. For the existing library over the river, the costs were much more detailed. Methune worked closely with the Robinson Company to ensure that the costs represented in the estimates were consistent with KCLS standards. For the existing library over the river, it needs to be noted that the necessary upgrades for it to become a state-of-the-art library were substantial. All of the mechanical systems have reached the end of their useful life and need to be replaced. There is insufficient electrical service and distribution to meet the KCLS standard for users. The upgrades required are enough to trigger the latest development standards, including meeting the state energy code, all the building codes, including a seismic upgrade, and the federal ADA standards. A part of the analysis included a seismic evaluation by Swenson Seifager, a well-experienced seismic engineering firm. The analysis did not include seismic design at that time, but the seismic permit design was completed in October of 2011 and the cost estimate was refined accordingly. The Robinson Company specializes in public sector building projects, performing 200 project cost estimates each year. They understand the requirements for public bidding and contracting, including prevailing wage, special reporting requirements for grant-funded projects, and in this case, the design standards for state-of-the-art KCLS facilities. I would like to introduce the president of the Robinson Company, Mr. Kirk Robinson. He is here tonight to share the methods that are employed by his company for cost estimating. He's going to describe the special efforts that were made to develop a realistic cost estimate for the rehab of the existing library that became a part of the Methune Site Selection Study. He's also prepared to discuss the limitations of that cost estimate, particularly as no new architectural design work has been formed there to this date. So, Mr. Robinson, if you will.
Thank you, Peter. I'm Kirk Robinson. I'm president of the Robinson Company. We're a 27-year-old cost estimating and project management firm located in downtown Seattle. Since 1985, we've produced about close to 5,000 cost estimates, many of them on, I'd say about 80% of those on public projects, combination of schools, hospitals, libraries, and other public facilities. We have an 11-person staff, six of which are estimators, ranging experience from seven years to 32 years. So we have quite a experience, a wealth of experience doing cost estimates. We often get hired by owners, especially in public sector projects where there's not a general contractor on board, to do cost estimates at what we call the programming level, which means at the very beginning concept, which is really where we are here on this project, at the end of schematic design, which the drawings are 15 to 20% complete, at the end of design development, 40% complete, and at the end of construction documents. Our job is to make sure that those estimates stay consistent all the way along and that they bid at or under budget. So that's a challenge that we have as professional cost estimators. What we do typically is we also we're often involved in what we call the programming level estimating. We mean we try to put budgets together on a very simple concept. I mean, we know the square footage. Maybe we know the size of the site. We have a sense of the quality of the building that our client wants. We try to stay within our strength. We don't do bridges and dams and things like that because we really wouldn't know what those cost. But we certainly do feel like we know the cost of libraries. We've worked for over 20 years with King County Library System on a wide variety of projects, but we do know their standards. So when somebody asks us how much it's going to cost us to build a building, we don't try to just say, well, here's a dollars per square foot number. Because dollars per square foot numbers have a lot of variety, which there's a cost to the site that's a different on every site, there's a different cost. Buildings have different sizes and different dollars per square foot. Just because a building is a certain size, if it expands by 10%, does the price increase 10%? Not necessarily. So there's a methodology to our estimating, and we're very careful with it. On this project, we were working with Methune, who is a very good architect and made a good decision there. And we worked with them on a wide variety of options. We also then, as Peter said, we then refined the number after receiving more information from Swenson Seifager, who again is a very good structural engineer, who gave us quite a bit of detail for the information about upgrading the structure seismically. We then combined those numbers and then came up with a new budget for the project. That's our typical process that we use for what we call a cost model or programming level estimate. We really don't have a floor plan. We just know what we're likely to see King County design from what their experiences with them. So that's the typical methodology that we use. We use contingencies at these levels because there's a what we call there's an estimating contingency. And that estimating contingency is a contingency that reduces as the drawings go from one piece of paper to 200 sheets of paper. And that's typically what we see. And so it's a way we manage the budget because we don't know every detail. But we do have a pretty good sense of where they're going to be at the end of the day. So can I answer any specific questions?
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Yeah, I had one, and thank you very much for that explanation. And it sounds like you have a great history of doing this. I was looking through the estimate that you prepared for remodeling the existing library and was understanding it. I mean, it was in language that I could relate to, you know, plumbing and roofing and electrical. And I looked and those items all added up to $5.2 million. And then design contingency 680,000, general contractor 406,000. Then there was a development costs item, and it said 3.1 million. And can you explain what that is?
Yes. They different owners use different numbers. Sometimes they refer to as soft costs. Sometimes they refer to as indirect costs. Well, we our first number that you referred to is the number that we anticipate the general contractor to bid the project in. The development costs are all the things that are not part of the general contractor's bid. For instance, design fees, your architect fees are not part of the general contractor's bid. State sales tax, not part of the general contractor's bid. A contingency for unforeseen conditions, not part of the general contractor's bid. Permits, builder's risk insurance, furnishings and equipment, those are the things that are not part of. And those costs can range anywhere from 40 to 60% depending on the type of building it is. And sometimes, for instance, hospitals have 60% soft costs.
Okay.
This is a fairly reasonable level for costs, soft costs.
Okay, good. That's helpful. Okay. And then I have another question. I'm trying to decide whether this is fair to ask or not. There's been a lot of discussion about repurposing this building if we go forward with the Piazza library. Any ideas what we're looking at? I mean, if we repurpose it for environmental interpretive center or an art center?
That is an unfair question.
Yeah.
Let me start there. At the same time that we had Methune commission the cost estimate for the library, they also performed at council direction, you might recall, an estimate for the simplest reuse possible of that building. So it was, for all intents and purposes, just a big open shell with a minimum number of walls, new mechanical, I mean, the same general redesign of the building, outside walls, new windows, new mechanical systems, bathroom redo. But in terms of furniture and fixtures and offices or what have you, specialized spaces, there weren't any. It was just a big open building, and that was on the order of $2 million. And if you would add in the additional cost for the seismic and floor loading that were generated in the meanwhile, it would be close to $3 million. So that's kind of the bare bones cost of rehab of that building, if you want to take it from there.
I don't think I'd add anymore. I mean, part of it is understanding what's going to be the use of the space is very important. So I've gotten in a lot more trouble by giving a ballpark number than not giving. So I'll probably not. But I'd be glad to study it for you.
You know, and I don't want to ask you to give a number, but somewhere in there as you start putting furnishings in and making it into a useful public space and putting the lighting and the other things you need, you must trip some standards that cause it to go from 3 million to needing full compliance and 10 million. You get to 10 million. I was just trying to wonder, I was trying to speculate because the public will do this speculation, you know, what is that threshold? I mean, we can't just we can't just strip out the stuff that's in there and open it up to the public. I mean, we're going to have to do some reconditioning of it. But from where I sit, not being a development professional, it just looks like, you know, we'd get back into this territory as soon as we say we're going to open it up for a public use. And I guess I'm just trying to figure out, you know, have somebody tell me whether that's right or not.
The typical way you would do it is you would first define what you're going to do in that space and level of quality of that building. It's one thing to create just a shell, and it's another to make it a state-of-the-art building. So those are the two different kinds of ranges. And I think until you really decide that, it would be premature to put any numbers.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I just want to say that I've heard some very positive things about your organization and what you've done throughout the state.
Thank you.
In terms of the diverse projects that you've worked on. And of course, I'm familiar with your 20-year history of involvement with KCLS. Based on this estimate for the Cedar River site of roughly $10,100,000, you mentioned that you're very well-versed on the standard that KCLS expects and that they'd like to put into their facilities. Could you just expand a little bit? And I am familiar with the seismic work that you've estimated or that was it?
Swenson Seifager.
Exactly. They've done on it. So could you just spend a little time helping people understand what we'd be getting for that 10 million-plus dollars at that Cedar River site in terms of what level of state-of-the-art facility would we get? And I've been told, for example, that, you know, when you're talking about remodeling, you're never going to get, you know, the same level of technology and things that can get built in because you're doing it from the ground up. When you talk about remodeling, you're, you know, you're going to have some limitations. Could you talk a little bit about what, based on your estimate, what are you going to see that library looking at? Should the voters, you know, vote that they like that site to be the chosen site and we move forward to that? What would they get for 10 million dollars?
Well, it all depends on what level of detail you want me to get into. I think if you visited any of the newer King County libraries, you would have that same kind of facility, meaning a very high-tech building. I think it's more, I think the more the better or the different argument would be what's the difference between the big five site and this site? And for the most part, there's not a lot of difference. I mean, all the mechanical, all of the electrical are going to be new in this facility. We've assumed that. So technology-wise, you're going to be the same. I think the biggest difference that I see between the two is the Cedar River site has a larger, it's a larger building. But it's, I'm not sure that it's a necessity to have it. But when we have a large building of 22,000 square feet and you only need 15, you have the burden of remodeling 22. Just as you can't just cut off 7,000 feet and say, we're not using it. You have to remodel the whole building to meet that standard. So, you know, I'm hoping, I'm not sure I can answer all the specifics, mostly because I can't tell you that I'm the personal estimator of all these. So I don't want to mislead anybody about that. But my staff would be able to answer that better.
You've done a great job. That's a lot better than what I've heard in the past. You're saying that it could be brought to a level of a state-of-the-art facility for that investment?
Yes, definitely.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson. Appreciate it.
Sure. Very much.
If I could just make a few follow-up comments. Apparently, there's a question about when do the design standards cause a complete rehab versus a partial rehab? And that involves when the upgrades that you're doing hit 50% of the King County's assessed value of the building, then everything kicks in. And if you consider just the mechanical systems in the building and the seismic upgrade, you're there. The building is assessed in 2011 at $3,083,000. And I'll just make this editorial comment about assessed values from the King County Assessor's Office. They don't spend a lot of time updating assessments of buildings that don't produce taxes for them. So they're always lagging behind on what a replacement value might be. And I guess you can't blame them for doing that, but that's the number we're stuck with. So it's good for people to know that that's how that works. I've also invited Bill Potasik to come tonight. They've had some recent experience rehabbing libraries. And of course, they've, you know, got a ton of experience building new libraries. And he doesn't have any, I don't think, specifics on the cost, just some general observations that he'd like to share.
Thank you, Peter, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. Bill Potasik, Director of the King County Library System. So why am I here tonight? Well, you know, first of all, I want to say, if you're going to have a vote, from our perspective as a partner in this project, we really encourage you to do it as soon as possible. I mean, you know, because let's not let this thing drag on. So everything I say tonight is not geared towards saying, let's wait and let's study this thing and let's, you know, because here's exactly what I wanted to tell you, that this is more of an art than a science. Let me use the Newport Library as an example. We planned because of the it's in unincorporated King County, and we didn't want to trip the what Peter was just talking about where you'd have to go. It was near, as a matter of fact, it was near a stream and things. So we really minimized the amount of expansion. I think it was only going to be like 800 square feet or even less for that library. So when we were thinking about fixing up the rest of the library, we developed a budget. We had an architect. We had, we actually had plans and whatnot, and we developed a budget of about 1.5 to 1.8 million dollars for that project. It was basically going to be a renovation of an existing building with a little bit of an expansion on corners so we didn't trip into any of these other requirements. When we got into the building, we found that we had to totally replace the HVAC system. Unfortunately, in this building, it was the same vintage, by the way, as the library over the river right now. And we found out that the heating and air conditioning system was embedded into the concrete below the building. So we had to take out all of that part of it. We found out that a roof needed to be replaced. We basically had to take the building down to its studs. The project ended up costing at least twice as much. The project ended up costing at least twice as much as it did in our estimate, and even after we had a design. Most of those increased costs came from change orders that, you know, we really wouldn't have known about until we got into the project. So, I mean, I don't want to scare you or anything like that, I just want to be realistic. I want you to be realistic, you know, in terms of what you might be looking at. We had a similar experience with the expansion of the Covington Library, which is a much newer library, but we incurred considerable costs for the existing part of that building. We added another 7,500 square feet onto that building, but we had to do a considerable amount of work on the existing building. And then similarly, a project we're working on right now down in Auburn, where we're doing a 5,000-square-foot expansion to the 15,000-square-foot building there, and again, considerable additional costs for the building. There are mitigating circumstances between all of those facilities, and I don't want to say that any one of them would apply in this case or not, but I think it's just important that you understand what our recent experience has been. So that's the first thing that I wanted to convey to you. The second thing I wanted to convey was that we have some very serious concerns about the amount of time it will take to get permits in this particular situation. Given the unique placement of this library, we've had an opportunity to talk to some folks that we know from Department of Ecology and other folks, and, believe me, you know, this process, and we've had a chance to work with some of the city folks as well, and I don't think that we all, any of us know the full extent of this, and we probably never will. It's much like the construction cost, because if, some of these, if parts of the process are appealed, they could take much longer than anticipated. We don't know exactly what the requirements are gonna be from the state and how much discretion the city will have with this particular project. So again, those are unknowns. I just wanted to point those out, not for the purpose of saying, "Don't have the vote," and not for the purpose of delaying the vote, and not for the purpose of influencing. I think that the library system, just so we understand what the risk might be, will probably be investigating those issues independent of the city, because we just need to know what those might be in the event that you do put this on the ballot. And then the last thing I wanted to say was that, you know, even if it goes to the ballot, we hope that the city will continue with the design and the process of the current site, because in the event that the election takes place, or in the votes is that we stay at this site, in the Big Five site or whatever, we would not like to lose any time on this thing. We're concerned because the inter-local agreement has two new libraries in it, and what we want to do is to make, and the budget that you funded for this has just enough to get those two new libraries done, and we're trying to preserve, if you will, that amount of support and funding for these two new libraries, so that the library services can, for the citizens of Renton, can be all that was anticipated when the vote took place. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and to share any experience that we've had at KCLS.
Council, have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corman.
Well, just, I think just one, I'm just wondering, I'm hearing two, two different people with different experiences, but Mr. Robinson has said he's done 5,000 projects, and he's given us an estimate for the remodeling, and are you saying that we couldn't trust that?
No, no. And by the way, we've had 20 years of experience with Curt and his company, and they've been very good, and then we, in fact, I know there have been projects we've specified use Robinson's. So, you know, no, I'm not, I'm just trying to say, this is what our experience is. I don't think anybody could stand up here and say with 100% surety is, here's the deal. On a building that you're renovating, you know, you're stuck with that building. I think he said that. Like, in a new construction, you can always say, "Okay, if it's not meeting our budget, we can make alterations here, we can do something about this, maybe we can reduce the square footage or reduce the quality of this material." When you're dealing with an existing building, you're stuck with that, and you have to spend whatever it takes to get the job done on that. And that's the big difference that you're talking about.
Okay.
I just, you know, I just don't think anybody really knows that. You've got the best estimator in the area working on this project.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Zwicker and then Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, Bill, so just two things. So first of all, you guys will pay for all cost overruns, right?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just kidding. No, please, that's not verbatim, he's not paying for cost overruns. Bill, I just want to-
After we build a baseball stadium or something.
I want to express my sincere thanks for your openness this last couple of weeks, your honesty, your ability to work with us, and a frank and open dialogue with the administration. That really means a lot to me that you've done that and that you continue to work as a partnership. You know, you guys are our library system now. The city's not in the library business, but we partner with you to continue the great service, and I really appreciate your efforts and your openness to work with us.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Potasik, as I understand it, you know, when we hear estimates of the permitting could take five, six years, that in fact would be an extreme, from what I understand, that if we are able to do the renovation at the Cedar River site, and it is more of renovation and maintenance, that that could have the possible prospects of obtaining a permit in a year, you know, possibly. Barring appeals, I understand that the appeals from various different agencies or groups that have concerns about the habitat, that would be the potential cause for, you know, drawing out delays and getting a permit. Is that accurate?
Well, Councilmember Taylor, let me say this, that one of the sources of our concern, and this was well in advance of the City of Renton annexing into the King County Library System, but it's just so happened that the person we hired to be our, one of our project coordinators, was the environmental permitting officer for the City of Bremerton, Dree Ralph, and she had a considerable amount of experience. The City of Bremerton was involved in a number of projects that, over the water kinds of things. So it was really her experience that kind of first caused us to say, hey, you know, there might be something more to this. I think, you know, again, I'm not an expert in this area, but I do know that even talking with the staff here at the City of Renton, that we've, you know, she and we have raised enough issues to say, there could be considerable more time, more time involved with this than was originally estimated. The other thing is that a lot of those estimates were based on a different project. I mean, if you're talking about in the environmental, you know, center or whatever else, it's a different animal than the library is, and, you know, we're talking about structural changes and other things to get the library up to the point where it can function totally as a library, and that may be a different level of project. So I'm not an expert as to when it transitions from a repair and maintenance to a construction project, but I think that, you know, it's likely that, no matter what, this building is very, very well-known across the state, according to those folks who work in that business, and I think that it will become under a lot of scrutiny. And I think we can all count on that if anything is being done with that facility. So I think that's the only thing that we really know, and I can say for sure at this point in time, but experience from other projects, from other jurisdictions, would say that the length of time is gonna be considerably longer than a year, but I can't stand here tonight and tell you what it would be.
We don't know for sure.
No.
Be answered.
Any other questions of Mr. Potasik? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, this is a public meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence?
I received no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, was there any further questions from Council of any of the staff before we move on to audience?
Peter, just because the last question had to do with the permitting, is there any, anything additional that you could add?
Yeah, I can add a little something. Given the history of the support for the development of the former Big Five site as a library, of course, we saw that the group that presented earlier tonight then got into full speed with coming forward with suggestions for alternate use. And I know that you were all very concerned that the building itself not stand dark. And understanding also that permits can be problematic, we began the process to get to the point where we could apply for permits. That's why we got the design level, or the permit level of seismic work done by Sven Saefager. That was the last piece that was necessary in order to apply for permits. And Todd Black on our staff has had quite a bit of experience working in and around the water. He knows the folks in the agencies very well, so he's had the lead on that, and he's been quite active with it. He's also worked with Vanessa Dolby in the Planning Department and Chip Vincent, her boss. And Renton is the jurisdiction for providing the permits. Now, we have had recently discussions with Dree from KCLS to discuss her concerns, and I know that the next step will be for the three of them. I myself cannot enter Department of Ecology. It's not court order, it's just a feeling.
I'm wondering if there's a restraining order or something.
And they intend to sit down with the regional manager and get written direction so everybody's happy with what exact permits are required, and then we won't have any backpedaling on that issue later on. So that's where we're at with it right now, working together.
Thank you, Peter. Ms. Nada?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Covington reminded me that there is some correspondence. I'm aware of an email that was sent to Councilmember Rich Zwicker from Stuart Avery. I happen to have a copy of that, so I'm handing it to the city clerk at this time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this is an email. It is from Stuart Avery to Mr. Zwicker. It talks about the authoring process for the ballot measure, includes his suggestion for change of ballot title wording, and asks alternative wording be considered. So I believe it's what's discussed previously.
And I believe all of the council received that same email, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, if we're gonna mention email, I think we should mention, I think there were other emails too. Some of them were freedom of information requests, or people trying to find information from Methune and related. I don't know if the clerk wants to just identify for the public that those emails exist with a variety of questions that we've received between two weeks ago and now.
I received a number of public records requests. I don't recall very correspondence pertaining to the public meeting, however.
Okay.
Came to my-
Okay.
And, and Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry. And this was actual, in the sense that it was communicated to the council. This isn't to, this was communicated to Mr. Zwicker, and apparently to the rest of the council, and that makes it correspondence to the council.
I see.
Versus a public records request or something, even correspondence that would've come to me, I wouldn't consider presenting it here.
Okay, and so if I receive, I received a request, for instance, from the public who was interested in the line item, that the budget, or the money was put in place for these bonds, and I directed that correspondence on to finance, and finance came back with an answer to me, and I sent it along to the member of the public that asked, "Do we need to have a record of all that for this public meeting, or is that extraneous, or is it enough to just identify that there's such types of correspondence?"
Generally speaking, if a citizen cannot, you know, attend the meeting or attend the meeting, if they want to submit correspondence, you know, they usually will make that known that this is, I would like this as part of the public meeting record.
Okay.
And so they identify it as that. So asking a general question and general answers that aren't specific to it normally would not be considered part of the-
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to audience comments. We've got several people that have signed up to address the council on this issue. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes, and because we have several people signed up, please keep your eye on the timer, because we will shut you off at five minutes. First is Gary Barber.
Thank you, Mayor Law, Council President Zwicker, council members. I wanted to express a few thoughts in-
Please state your name and city.
My name is Gary Barber. I'm a Renton resident. That's Barber, B-A-R-B-E-R. I wanted to state a few thoughts with regards to the situation with the project and the discussion going forward as to the vote. It was very clear, at least to my wife and I, when we first went through the process of getting annexed into the King County Library System, what was gonna happen. This is not new news. We knew that a library needed to be built, and that was part of the agreement, and it kind of boggles my mind that we have to go through this process again, but I understand the concerns of the public and with regards to the current location. Billy Crystal said it best, that change is really hard work. So what this involves is the vision of the city council, the mayor, the citizens, those of us that really support the new library and its location, and looking at the constraints that might be put forth by trying to rehab the library in its current, in its current place. I mean, 46 years is a long life for any building. Some don't get a second chance, you know. It seems to be more prevalent in recent past that buildings get torn down, but this is a building that's in a very unique and special location. It really is a unique opportunity that gives us the ability to give it a new life, to give it a new mission, to bring it forward into something else that the city can be proud of. In this instance, this is a building that can really contribute to the future of the city with, from both a tourism standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, from a new use standpoint, and really as a hub for the downtown park and what I like to refer to as the Commons. The cost will be a major issue in my wife and I's decision as voters, period, end of story. If it costs us any more money, we can't vote for it, because economic times are what they are. We can't afford to pay any more, period. When you remodel a building, you make do. When you build a new building, you can build what you need to build. The concern I have with waiting for permits for rehabbing the library in its current location could be a substantial burden on the city, and I think it's a commitment that you need to be very clear on once we proceed, once we move forward. And I really support the library and its new location, and I'll support, also support the new life of its current location. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marvin, did you cross your name out, or do you?
I thought I did.
Okay, please, come on up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council members. President, Liz Zwicker, thank you so much. My name is Marvin Rosette, and for the record, that's spelled R-O-S-E-T-E. I'm also a citizen of Renton. I live in the Renton Highlands and a very proud graduate of Renton High School. Yay. And I say that and to give perspective to, I've got the, I've had the opportunity to see the growth of the city, and I can tell you that was a long time ago since I graduated. So with that, the city has transformed itself into something from, since the last 20 years since I've been and also had the opportunity to visit other cities around the country. So I'm very pleased when I'm coming back to my hometown where we're seeing the current progress. Today, and we've just, earlier today, as of this recording, we had the opportunity to present to council the Liberty Parks vision of what the new building could be. And first of all, again, I want to say thank you to the city staff and to the city of giving us those resources in order to make sure to have us and work with our, work with our neighbors to have quality information to you and to present our works to the city. Also with that, in my, in my view of working in the committee and trying to find new uses of the building, it was become very evident to me that the building had also run its course of its useful life. Again, after seeing it for many years, I know, and seeing other library facilities across the country as well, I saw that there's other possibilities that can be for the building as well. I know that, working in the business community, I'm an insurance agent, so my time in working with risk management, one of the issues that I've had to work with is why the building is gonna continue to be where it is and why it is. I know that we talked about standards on making it the state-of-the-art building, but if we stay at the current location, the question is, how long will that be the state-of-the-art? Could it be a few, a decade or a few years? We don't know, given the current configuration and given the current usage of how it's used now, and as well as the new injuring standards. Another question when serving on the Building Committee, the question is, is this really about the library, or is it about the usage of the building? And I think right now it's become about- And I think right now it's become about the usage of the building, not so much that it is the library. The emotional connection, the emotional ties, well, and that's usage with the area, and that I understand. Also, how long will this building be there before it's torn down by itself, either through nature, or through other usage than in councils later, later on to the future? We don't know. And that is a cost factor that I wouldn't want to put on myself, or those who, my neighbors who would want to live here. But a new facility, reiterating the point of Gary Barber before me, it allows for an opportunity to grow. We can do more once it's off, once it's off a property that is on, if you will, dry land. We won't have to worry so much about where, we can worry a little less about expansion or risk, if you will, of what dangers are there on flooding, on seismic, on usage and safety. It also fosters a lot more, it's also a lot closer to a school. I remember trying to huff about an hour, just trying to get there and back to try to do homework, and try to catch a bus as a high school student. And also for safety issues. I know it was really hard for me to try to come home at 5:30, go to the library, coming home at 5:30 at night from its current location amongst trees and a dark park. At least now within downtown, I know that I'm gonna be within earshot of, I know there'll be a police cruiser nearby. It'll be near stores where we can grab a snack, a little bit more efficiently, and near, and near bus lines, to make its usage more efficient. So in, so in closing, I want to say to the council, these are things that I've thought of, and I know that as a grown-up now, with my other colleagues who are in the business field in the Renton area, I know that they also feel this way. It's been very, they've been very silent, and have not had the opportunity to voice their, their opinions, but also as a Chamber, Renton Chamber member, I know that Downtown Association would like to make theirs, a lot of business owners and my only other colleagues in the business field would also like to make their voices a little bit more known, and a little bit more vocal as time moves on. So with that, your consideration, again, I say thank you to the council for hearing us today, and thank you for the consideration of a, of a new purpose for the Liberty Park building.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Sir, can I ask you one question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and I...
I'm sorry, councilman.
No, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Not at all, sir.
I really want to understand. So everything you said, I mean, I, there are differences of opinion, and I've heard your opinions expressed before, and I respect that, you own those opinions. But the one thing that did kind of, I wondered about, and I wonder if it is other members of the chamber feel this way, you did talk about not being sure how long that building's gonna be there.
Okay, that's my, that's my personal view on how that is. Again, in, I've had the opportunity to serve, I currently serve on the International District Design and Review Board, in, over with the City of Seattle and their Department of Neighborhoods, where we're looking at situations of usage of buildings, and how, of, how businesses use them, and also on retrofits and retrogrades. And so when I look that, I bring those experiences in into looking at how the current building will be used. And so when you're looking at what the architect companies had said earlier in testimony today, we are looking at four square walls, but how would that work in the synergy of the entire neighborhood? We have to consider just exactly, not only usage of space, but we have to prove as a, you know, as a group, just exactly, not only where, say, the libraries go, but what's gonna go in there. And if you're gonna do that, that's a cost to us in terms of, do we want this particular usage there? And so my, my opinions on how, you know, on usage and where we, you know, we're gonna possibly go with it, I would say that, again, where my colleagues would feel, my business colleagues would feel, that I think we need more, some, we need more discussion on what the library, what the old library building will be, and less time of where it's gonna go. We know it has to move.
So one of the issues I'm struggling with is, as a council, we've, we've essentially committed that if we move out of that library building, that the building would still stay, that the public would still have that building. And, and yet I don't, I don't yet have a concept for how we, we pay for any additional public use of that. And it kinda has a bearing, like, on this discussion, because in four weeks, we're gonna have to have, or tonight, we're gonna have to have an explanation of the costs, and, and as long as we're carrying a promise to the public that that other building is gonna be in public use, we have to, we have to mean it. You know, we have to think in terms of a long horizon, the foreseeable future, that the existing Cedar River building would still be there. And, and yet, it's funny, 'cause I just pick up little signals that, you know, if, if the only way to pay for an environmental interpretive center or something was to go out with a bond issue, if there was, if the public wasn't really behind that, or the chamber wasn't really behind that, if people thought, well, that building's past its prime, it's forty-seven years old, it's gonna fall into the river in the next flood, then it makes me think that we'll have broken a commitment to the public.
Well, I would posit at this, let's say it's not an environmental interpretive center. Let's say Farina Future turns into a spaceport, for example, as a future example. What I would posit is, is that we're looking at the opportunity to have two facilities, not just only a library that's actually operated by KCLS, but also a brand-new public facility that, that we would get there, for the way I would see it as a public administrator, that's where my degree was, my expertise originally was, is that for the cost, we're getting two public facilities with great usage and high usage. People would want to come downtown, and people would want to come to the new facility, in whatever it is that the council and the public decides to choose. But I think it's more important that we, as a public decide, start beginning to decide quickly, that on what the new usage of the building should be, versus worrying about if, and trying to keep it, because we know the library's gonna move, either through remodeling, or repurposing of the facility.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is David Beeden.
I'm David Beeden, a resident of Renton, last name is B-E-E-D-O-N. Two things I'd like to ask. One is that earlier in one of the presentations, someone mentioned a pre-annexation contract with KCLS to have a brand-new library building. This is the first time I've heard about that, and I'd like to know where I can find out more about it, because I think that's important for the public to know. Does anyone know anything about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It was I who mentioned it. It is CAG 09-136, and it was in July of 2009.
CAG 09-136.
You can come in the city clerk's office tomorrow, and we can probably get you a copy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the interlocal agreements are also posted through the city's website.
I'm aware of the interlocal agreement, but this was something new that I hadn't heard of.
I believe that is one of them.
That's the number I have.
Regarding the wording of the concise description, or of the, the additional, more lengthy description, I hope that the phrase "west of the Renton Piazza" is more, is, is explained in detail, whether with an address, or with, I don't know, between the piazza and the church, whatever. Because Rainier Avenue is west of the piazza, and I don't think that any library's going in there. So just, just a clarification. That's all. Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Stevens.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Stevens, S-T-E-V-E-N-S. I'm a thirty-year resident, a Renton resident. We got our taxes done last week. So Terry and I went for some R&amp;R to visit family in Walla Walla. Saturday morning, we walked to the patisserie downtown, just off Main Street. Patisserie is what draws me downtown. Great pastry, coffee, and Wi-Fi for my iPad. After coffee, we walked out the door. There was music playing on Main Street. We had to walk over to listen. There's a small brick area with benches, and a lot of locals and visitors gathered around. There's just something about music playing outside like that that sets the tone for a good time. Needless to say, after three hours, we'd shopped at five stores, ate at two others, and window-shopped at others. At 7:30 that night, we walked downtown again to check out the music and grab a bite to eat. In a three-block area, there were six live bands playing, and other places where people were sitting outside visiting. As we walked down Main Street, there were people out walking, and there was music in the air. We then found a place with a $5 cover for a blues band. The place was full with locals in their twenties, and through maybe their sixties. When the band started playing, we're gonna have a good time. Everyone was singing and dancing. The food and beverage orders flowed. So on one day, we spent money at seven places in about six hours, having a great time, that started with a cup of coffee, and we were lured onto Main Street by the music. That's foot traffic. That's a revitalization success story. In 2001, my daughter chose to go to Whitman College. Before 2001, there wasn't a whole lot to do on Main Street. In 2006, there was a documentary on Channel Nine about the Beehive Salon and Spa on Main Street, and the downtown revitalization efforts. Last year, Walla Walla was named the friendliest town in the U.S. by AAA. And now Sunset Magazine has an article, "Walla Walla: Best Main Street." They talk about the gentleman that opens the sidewalk clock outside a store every Friday, cranks up the gearworks for the, for telling the time for the week. The clock has work to do, like the rest of downtown Walla Walla, which is thriving, thanks to a ten-year revitalization program. In the 1970s, its downtown began a downward slide. Three of the four department stores fled, and a major landmark, the Marcus Whitman Went condo. But Walla Walla retained some critical assets, and there was a nucleus of people who cared. "People are becoming isolated," says Robert Parish, owner of Downtown's Backstage Bistro. "I wanted us to start associating with each other again, and downtown is the place to do it. You feel more alive here than in a mall," says Timothy Bishop, executive director of the Downtown Walla Walla Foundation. "Our most important decision was to not put all our eggs into one big basket that was going to fix downtown. It was a succession of mostly small projects." Downtown Renton can be like this. I want downtown Renton that is bustling with people out having a good time and shopping. We can do it with the right branding and marketing and commitment. We already have the right items to draw people downtown, but we need to create the environment that will make people want to stay and browse. Like Walla Walla found, it can be through small projects. I bet the city could get behind doing something to spruce up the streets and focused marketing. The draw and foot traffic that effective use of the piazza could draw is the shopping foot traffic our downtown needs. Let's more effectively use the piazza with music, opening the doors for more ongoing farmers' or arts market, rotating artists for monthly art events. Bring back summer movie nights to the piazza, where places like Pop or Smoking Monkey Pizza and others could offer movie time takeout specials. Let's build a more robust monthly calendar of events focused around the piazza and downtown. I've spent twenty-seven years working with business communities to revitalize. I'm just as passionate about helping our downtown Renton business owners, and I'd be willing to bet the 6,383 petition signers are equally as passionate about helping the downtown businesses thrive. You have some serious decisions to make. Make wise decisions in spending taxpayers' money, listen to the people, and let's work together to use more effective means to revitalize our downtown core. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I'm David Keyes, K-E-Y-E-S, and I live here in the Highlands. I want to step back a little bit, because part of your decision as you decide whether to go forward with a ballot issue is also the issue of whether you can successfully negotiate any change with KCLS as the project goes forward. In the, the last two council meetings, the initiative was debated, was discussed at great length, and there have been a number of comments and statements, both by council members and some members of the public, to the effect that any action that the city takes that interrupts or complicates clauses under the interlocal agreement, the ILA, between the city and KCLS, would be actually in violation of the ILA. And then the further argument goes that any disruption or violation of the ILA apparently is being considered an illegal act by the city. This in turn, then, is used to rule that the initiative is invalid. But in reading the ILA, I think that the citizens, and certainly you as council members, because you have an opportunity to act here, need to see that it's an agreement between two parties, they're government parties, but two parties to collaborate in the construction, and then the eventual operation of the two Renton libraries. I'd suggest that it's important to understand the ILA between KCLS and the City of Renton as a contract that sets out both rights and responsibilities for each party at each stage of the anticipated process. And in fact, reading through the process, the definitions of each stage of the process in the ILA, the City of Renton has a number of points at which it has the opportunity, it has the right, to review the progress of the project, the budget of the project, and it has an obligation to make input, whether it's approving what has happened, whether it sets a different direction, or tries to negotiate some element to a more favorable position. Under the ILA, in Part IV, the design and bid process, specifically paragraph, Part IV, Paragraph B, sub-paragraphs 1, 2, and 3, small case, Roman numerals, talk about design presentations. The point two there, Roman numeral two, is that design teams will host a set of community open houses and present schematic designs for each library. Point three goes on, that the design team, which is representatives of both KCLS and the city, will review and provide input, excuse me, the design team and the architect will present the respective schematic design to the city council and to the KCLS library board. Then in Paragraph C, it's titled "Selection and Final Design." Essentially, that means that both parties have to approve the schematic design, and it specifically states both parties, and both parties have to approve the detailed cost estimate that goes with the schematic design. That then forms the basis for what is considered the city's maximum contribution. I'd suggest that that means the city has both the right to review the design and the estimate at schematic design. It's clearer as it talks about schematic design than at any other point in the process. And to review and negotiate any reductions in scope, if they're necessary, or other changes at that time. I'd suggest that that's a function for the council, because it has such heavy financial obligations for the city.
I'm sorry, Mr. Keyes, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stuart Avery.
My name is Stuart Avery, A-V-E-R-Y. I'm a Renton resident, seventeen years. Thought I'd maybe break this up a little bit, and backpedal a little bit, and also extend my thank you to the Community Services Department, Terry, and the rest of the crew. They do do a fabulous job in our city. We are very blessed to have them, and the staff that works for this city, so just wanted to acknowledge that. I also wanted to thank our assistant city attorney, is it Ms. Zeneta? Is that how it's pronounced? For the work that you've put into the concise description of the proposed ballot statement, I know exactly what you mean by "mobile." When I had submitted my, my mild rewrite on that, I could only imagine what you must have gone through to get seventy-five words, and I went cross-eyed counting back and forth when I was doing that. So I did want to address a couple of items on why I had done a mild rewrite on it, and I know that the council members... I know that the council members, the attorney's office, Council President, Mr. Zwicker, and the mayor, all have received a copy of that, so thank you for considering it. There were a couple of areas of confusion. I thought that it was more confusing at the end when we talked about the library and how it might be perceived by voters as possibly staying a library, and that's why I chose the words "library building" and "for alternative public use." I wanted to talk a little bit about costs because that was on the, was up for discussion. And personally, and this is not speaking for the 6,383 petition signers, but personally, I'm okay with having the costs on the ballot. And I think that there was a $10,100,000 figure that had come up about the possible repurposing of the, not the repurposing, but maintaining the Cedar River location as our city's library downtown. And my understanding is that that estimation is actually quite well, that it's a good estimation. And although it is more money, dollars, and I heard that one of the previous speakers indicate that it had everything to do with money, that if I was going to vote, you know, one was going to cost more than the other, I would vote for the less expensive one. But we do have to talk about the repurposing potential. I know that the Cedar River location will not be left vacant should we build a downtown library north of the, or west of the piazza, excuse me. So there are going to be costs involved with that. That has to be part of, in my opinion, the ballot measure. If we're going to include costs for one side or the other, and we're going to talk about it being for alternative public use, it should state that that will be an additional cost. That is something that the voters, I think, should be aware of and shouldn't be buried somewhere. Actually, it should be in both the statement and in the full text of the ballot. And I really do think that even if the downtown Cedar River location costs more money, it's still a better quality location because what you're getting for that money is you're getting everything, including a park, the amenities that go with that, the recreational activities, the ease of access, ease of parking, you know, all the things that the city has come to love about that location. So it is a quality location. And when you're spending money, my wife's a great shopper. She clips coupons and she's always telling me why she spent more on this or less on that. One of the things she tells me is I'm always looking for quality. And quality is something that is priceless. So when Mr. Potasik was up here talking about possible costs and things like that, you know, what he wasn't measuring into those costs and what I want, you know, we hope the voters will, is that the quality of the location and the experience that we're going to get with a first-class, state-of-the-art library over the Cedar River is worth an extra, whatever it is, 800, $700,000, $800,000, because for the time that library's going to be there and it's going to be used by families, it's going to pay for itself. So I just wanted to make that statement. There shouldn't be any confusion if and when this goes to ballot, I should say when it goes to ballot. What I'm hoping is, is if this is going to be a binding ballot, I would like to see that the city move as fast as possible on this. The faster we can get this up to the voters, the less money that we're going to invest in the existing, or the west of the piazza location. In fact, if there's any way that the council can recognize-
Sorry, Mr. Avery, you're, sorry to cut you off.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mark Martinez.
Good evening. Mark Martinez, I live in the Renton Highlands, spelled like all the baseball players. I want to speak specifically to some of the wording in the, that we're using, first off, and that is the term either west of the piazza or the Big Five location. And I know the Big Five is the store and you might not want to, you know, use the term "Big Five" because of the store, but I've changed it. I've used "Big Five location." Due to the wonders of modern technology, I was able to specifically trademark "Big Five location." And if you use that in the ballot, I'll be charging a dollar per printed copy on that one. Further, I'll be collecting sales tax, so that'll be money that'll go back to the city to help pay for it. All kidding aside, I think it's really good. We've got a good process going along, good, good, the verbiage of what's going in the ballot and all the things that are going on, I think is really good. I'd like to thank the city attorney for coming up with the words. I do want to note, like I said last week, that we make sure it's just blatantly obvious that what the costs are going to cost in some of these things. And the four additional, the repurposing is put in the ballot. You choose the site west of the, the, west of the piazza, and the current building gets repurposed. And in the explanation statement, make sure it's clear that, you know, if we choose west of the piazza, we're going to have to spend the $9.3 million to build the new library, and then we'll have to spend an additional three to, you know, $10 million on repurposing the existing location. And if we build it at the current location, we'll end up spending $10 or $12 million. So those are some, some things that I'm, I want to see because whoever pays for, right, if the City of Renton floats another bond to pay, to refurbish the building, if we charge KCLS costs for overruns or whatever, however it gets paid for, I'm still paying for it, right? Because I pay my taxes to the city, I pay my sales tax, I pay my real estate taxes for both the city taxes and to KCLS. So if KCLS pays for overruns or the City of Renton pays for the redoing of two buildings, I'm still paying for it. And the citizens of Renton are still paying for it. So just on the note of paying for things, when I go out to purchase things, I specifically don't go out to purchase the cheapest and most convenient item I possibly can. I look for the item that is, fits my best use and is going to last the longest. I'm still driving the 1997 Jeep Grand Cherokee that I bought back in 1997, and it's suiting me well, and my kids are arguing who is going to get to drive it when they turn 16. So when we talk about costs, I just want to make sure we're looking at that long-term cost and, you know, are we going to pay for something twice? And I would venture to say if we're going to put this on a ballot, we kind of need to slow down and put the brakes on what we're doing now because if I was building a house and my wife and I got into a conversation about maybe building it someplace else, and we'll make a determination in three months on whether we build it someplace else or not, and I continue on with the permitting and the fees and renting equipment and talking to a contractor, and then three months down the road, she starts yelling at me that we're not making the house where we were going to do it, we're going to build it someplace else, now I've got all these fees and permitting, permitings and things that I've already paid for, that I can't get my money back for, that I'm going to have to pay for again at the new location. So, you know, I hope next week that's, that's an issue that the city addresses on making sure we're not spending more money than we need to at either way, whether it's built at west of the piazza or, or at the current location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Tabak, T-A-B-A-K, Renton citizen. Good evening, honorable mayor, council, audience members, and viewers at home. As time has gone by and I've watched the process following the extremely flawed vote in 2010 to annex to King County Library System, I've come to realize that we could liken this three-way partnership between the City of Renton, the citizens and residents of Renton, and the third party, KCLS, as a crowded marriage. We have the city and its Renton residents, we have the city and the KCLS, and we have KCLS involved with both parties. It's a three-way triangle. My question is, which relationship supersedes all the others? I believe it's the city government's relationship with its citizens and residents that is the most important as the city government is elected by its citizens. The King County Library System officials are not elected by anybody and they're not accountable to anybody that I know of. This marriage is not working for the citizens and residents of Renton, and it certainly does not work for this non-elected entity that has the power to decide where our Renton library is, paid for the rent and taxpayers, and it has final decision on the artwork, in fact. Mr. Mayor and council, we'd like our library to have a Renton identity and not a likeness to any other library in the King County Library System. Oh, that's what we already have. And also, this process of design and permitting cannot progress, progress until the outcome of the August 7th vote is known unless some entity is prescient of the outcome of that vote. I heard earlier tonight that a building that's 46 years old has run its course and has outlived its purpose. In that case, it's time to demolish or repurpose Renton High School at 100 years plus. How old is this city hall, can I ask?
This building was built in 1992. It was remodeled in 1997.
So how old is that then? 20 years?
It's almost 2000, halfway through 2002. I don't know when the building was completed, but it's probably 20 years.
20 years. So we have 36 more years to go here. This is a nonsensical argument, you can see. How long will it take to take, how long will it take to obtain permits for a repurposed building? Where's the money coming from for a repurposed building? I think Mr. Corman already mentioned that. These questions need to be answered honestly. I'd like to suggest that the people who want the library moved, get up a petition, go out into the city, and get 6,383 valid signatures. And then we'll know how the citizens of Renton really feel. But then we'll have the vote in August to settle the whole matter at that time. Thank you.
Next is Phyllis Forrester.
Phyllis Forrester, F-O-R-I-S-T-E-R, Renton. I'm like, Judy, 46 isn't old, okay? We have, a lot of people be, going to give it up if we have to all be refurbished or torn down after 46. You've been telling the citizens and voters and taxpayers that we need to go ahead with the city's plan, move the Cedar River Downtown Library to the Big Five lot because permits, contracts, and money has been expended by KCLS, and that's not so. If you, our elected representatives, are acting in good faith to honor the vote of the people on August 7th on whether or not the Cedar River Downtown Library should be abandoned as a library, and that a library should be built on the Big Five site, then a moratorium needs to be put on further actions at the Big Five site, be it money, permits, or contracts. The city and KCLS at this point seem to be barreling ahead on a project that has never had the backing of the majority of Renton citizens. In fact, the majority of Renton citizens feel they've been misled since the annexation election into KCLS. Did you listen to the testimony of the woman from the American Blinds Company on April, the April 2nd meeting? She said that the city promised downtown merchants that the Metro Transit Center remodel, which I'm sure included all of that's what happened down there, would restart, restart and improve business, and that's not been the case. In fact, it has been the reverse. The established and longstanding Renton business is leaving because of what the Metro Transit Center remodel actually did bring, and it wasn't business. You know what it brought. The apartments, condos, and downtown businesses need the Metro Transit Center itself to move out of downtown. Are you listening? I live in downtown Renton. I shop downtown Renton. I walk downtown Renton, and I can, I can tell you many times what is wrong with downtown Renton and the businesses proper. Because of the voters that signed the Initiative Petition, which has been validated and certified by the King County Elections Office, you need to cease and desist on the Big Five site, all, everything, until the results of the April, or the August 7th votes are in. Voters are assuming that that vote will be banning, binding, I know that I am. We need to know that you truly are representing the voters, taxpayers of Renton, and all of the citizens. We need to know that you are actually listening to the citizen input you've been receiving for keeping the Cedar River Downtown Library right where it is in the community center of the library, and acknowledging, and quit acknowledging special interest groups or your own created, from your own created information. The silent majority has spoken with the 9,399 signatures altogether and 603, 6,383 verified and accepted by the King County Elections Office. That's not real silent. The citizens, voters, and taxpayers have gone through the steps to legally get a vote taken by the Initiative Petition regardless of whether you approve of how it was worded. The Constitution doesn't say city council members need to approve of the wording of an Initiative Petition. You just simply need to honor it. It is Renton taxpayers' dollars that are paying for the proposed KCLS library on the Big Five site and Renton issued the $9 million bond. So KCLS is not the financial stakeholder here. We are. We're still paying the taxes that we paid to support the two libraries. We did the $9 million bond, so we need to be honored, not KCLS. They need to do what we say they do. I talked to the KCLS Elections Office and was told that if the city doesn't make the deadline dates for August 7th, for the August 7th presidential primary election ballot, then the measure can be placed on the November 6th presidential election ballot. That would be unfortunate, but it still would have a chance. We need to get the voting measure right so that the voters are very clear on what they are voting on. Yes, keep the Cedar River Library where it is. No, do not keep the Cedar River Library as our library. No confusion there. Sorry. You must not confuse the issue with city and KCLS rhetoric. I was, I heard this earlier today, this Liberty Park Building, a steering committee report, and they say that all the things you can do in this, in the, to repurpose the library, why don't you do that right down in the building that's right on the piazza? It's empty all the time. You can do the very same things there, and we've already got it. It's already there. It's already paid for. So, thank you.
Next is Beth Asher.
I hope I do this right. Oops, dang it. Jay showed me how to do it, but I didn't get it right, obviously, the first time or the second time. Okay. I think I've got it. Did I get it? Yeah, I think it's too zoomed in. No counting yet, because I'm not ready. Okay. Okay, thanks, Jay. Well, first of all, I'm going to start on a lighter note. I do have a lot of issues with the costs, with the citing, contractual issues, because I found some interesting things reading through the ILA regarding it as a contract. But on a lighter note, let's go with this. I heard that Mr. Potasik was kind of dismissive of the petition effort, that we only got about 6,000 signatures. So here's the input that we got for the survey. 246 Renton residents responded. That's .0027 percent, as opposed to the 15 percent of validated signatures, which, by the way, are all registered voters. And if we assume that the 3,016 of the 9,399 total signatures are the non-residents that responded here, which is 49 non-residents, 49 non-residents is half a percent. So again, the numbers are quite different. But anyway, what I wanted to tell you tonight is, you know what? We don't hate downtown, and we don't hate Renton. We love Renton. The reason we're passionate about the library is because we're passionate about Renton. We want Renton to grow. We want Renton to be vibrant. We want it to be a community where all of the diverse cultures can meet together and enjoy each other. And to that end, we've put together our own little sort of, you know, arts and culture statement here for a possible alternative use of the Big Five site. Because I don't believe that was a bad purchase. I believe that was a good purchase. I would be for purchasing more land downtown so that we could revitalize downtown. We could have partnerships. We could have studio space at low rent, regular rent, you know, free. We could involve the schools. We can involve the youth so that they can have a place to go and express themselves creatively. Oops, I think I touched something. Oh, well. We can work with a Renton Arts Commission. There are lots of partners we can have. We can really go for it. An arts and culture center is something that- An arts and culture center is something that people will go for, go to. And that's what we need for downtown. We need people to go downtown. We need something that people can enjoy there. A lot of twentysomethings like my son say, "I'm not going downtown. There's nothing down there." Well, let's give them something to go down there for. If there was studio space, he'd be down there with his friends, and they'd be recording, or they'd be making a graphic novel, or something of that nature. I can guarantee you that. They're a little nerdy, but they'd still be there. If there was a vibrant community there, a thriving multicultural community, if we could keep the piazza open all year and have exhibits, festivals similar to folk life, all kinds of things like that that tied into our arts and cultural center, not only would our residents go there and benefit, the local businesses would benefit. There would be people out walking around. We'd kinda drive away the bad element. And outsiders would come in. We could draw tourism. We could draw tourism to Renton, which, it doesn't draw tourism unless they wanna tour Boeing. So, I guess I would say, please carefully study this little proposal. And this was not a fantastic study done at tax dollar expense. This was all done by us at our own expense because we believe in Renton. We believe in downtown, and we're willing to help the merchants. You've got a fantastic core of people here that are enthusiastic. So, we are your concern. We are your constituents. KCLS is not your constituent. We are. Please, listen to us. Be for us. You are our voice. If you take that away, you have nothing, nothing. And we cannot continue, and I beg you to think what will happen if this becomes adversarial and you lose this group of vital citizens who want the best and who are willing to work for you. We'll work just as hard for downtown as we do to save our library. I guarantee you that. I guarantee you that. But don't ignore us. Don't disenfranchise us. Don't dismiss us. We are your concern. We are your voters, your residents, your citizens, whatever you call us. We are your first responsibility. I would beg you to think what you're doing to us. Thank you.
Next is Jeannie Green-Crook.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Green-Crook. It's G-R-E-E-N-E hyphen C-R-O-K. I live in Monterey Terrace. I've lived there for, in Renton area, for thirty-two years. I'm a local businessperson here now also. That's gonna be a hard act to come up here. Beth, you did a great job. I'm a little confused tonight. I had things that I wanted to say, but as far as being told that we needed a brand-new, brand spanking new library, is the land that the new library in the Highlands not gonna be a brand-new, state-of-the-art? So, it can be that. So, my concern here is that I like the library where it's at, on the river, and we have a building right next door that's 200 Mill Street that they did use at one time when they were doing some refurbishing for the library, and they moved some children's things over there, and they had children's events and story reading and that there. I was told that they did some new upgrades in there and lighting. Why can't we use that facility? It's Renton-owned. We own that building. We own the Big Five. And she's right. They need to have something in that core area. American Draperies Building is for sale. It's been for sale for like six months or a year. The sign's on the side of the building. That could be incorporated too, and they'd love to. They've been wanting to move for years. When the Transit Center came in, it was not a plus for them. I worked there for twenty-four years. I've been on my own now for seven years, and I'll tell you that that's one of their determining factors that they're moving out of town. So, I guess, I see here, I have a few notes. I think that I've pretty much covered it. If we're obligated to do a new library, my thought was the brand spanking new one up at the Highlands would be the one to focus on. So, if we refurbish the one over the river, then we take care of keeping a lot of people happy, and my grandchildren can go down and see the fish go up the river and spawn and learn their cultural things too. So, with that, I say thank you to all of you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
That's all we have signed up. Council, any questions or other items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I do have one question. For the benefit of the people at home who may not have been following this as closely as we have, what are our next steps?
Ms. Fontas.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, your next steps would be that I would present to you next week a resolution and a ballot title. And if you're inclined to act on that at that time, then you pass that resolution, and that's what gets sent to the King County Elections to place on the ballot the question of which site to select for the library. And we would then start working on, or we might even start tomorrow, working on an explanatory statement, the two-hundred-and-fifty-word variety. The city clerk is charged with the responsibility, well, the agency, and it has fallen to the city clerk, to identify a committee to write a pro statement and a committee to write a con statement. There are deadlines attendant to both of those responsibilities and to get that information into the voter's pamphlet. And let me think. There's, I'm missing something here, Bonnie. If, you know what I mean? I mean, those are the immediate responsibilities that we would all be facing. And there are deadlines for the explanatory statement. That's May fifteen. And there are deadlines, and I can't remember them right off the top, so let me go to my The explanatory statement is due May fifteen. Pro-con statements are due on May twenty-first. Rebuttal statements would be due on the twenty-third. Those are some of the things that we're gonna be facing, or that the committees that Bonnie would have to identify. She goes, she has a process that she follows to identify the three-member committee. It's, that's a maximum, three-member committee for the pro statement and a three-member committee for the con statement. And then they would work together to come up with those statements for the voter's pamphlet. They have deadlines that they would have to meet, et cetera.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wicker.
If I may, just for the council's convenience, maybe I can frame some of the issues that we've got or suggested course of action, and it wouldn't be in a form of a motion because we're not taking action tonight. But I think that from, you know, basic head nods and feeling around what we've been up here is we're looking to try to get it on the ballot, so we would proceed with that as still trying to make the August ballot. I've noticed a couple of issues that I think that it would be appropriate then to charge the Assistant City Attorney to prepare another draft of the ballot, concise statement, right? That's a seventy-five words concise statement, making sure that I'm accurate.
Concise description.
Concise description. That removes costs, the cost provision, so I freed up a few extra words, clarifies that last sentence based upon our discussions about library repurposing. And I think it's simply, if you did two versions, one with physical street addresses for each and one with descriptive terms, we could probably either debate that tonight, or we could just debate that fine-tuning next week as we passed it.
The only, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the only drawback to debating it next week is we want to continue to next week with the resolution, and the resolution has to contain the ballot title. I mean, I could come with two different resolutions.
Okay, no, I mean, that's perfect. I think your frame is. So, I've made some assumptions of tonight we could debate then the address slash location if we chose to, or we could, our option then is or have to present it. But that's kind of how I'm framing or see the issues faced tonight.
Right. I could come with two resolutions next week, one with the street address, and it would be the street address for both. I'm gonna put a street address for...
Consistency on both would be important.
Right. And so, I could, we could bring two resolutions.
Well, let's discuss that as a council and see where we go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I would hope that given the, given the importance of what we're attempting to do here in terms of trying to get the verbiage correct, get this on the ballot, making sure that we're gonna get it on the ballot by August, for the August seventh election, that why not consider a special meeting, maybe, you know, next week? Maybe a special meeting that will allow us to take a look at some of these preliminary options you're coming up with so that on Monday night, that there won't be a need for any continued debate, you know, discussion. They will know exactly that this is the ballot, that we wanna, this is the verbiage, the statement we wanna see go on the ballot, and we can move forward. We do have it within our realm of authority to have a special meeting. Why not consider that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Or I wonder if we could have a two-person subcommittee, maybe Mr. Taylor and Mr. Wicker could get together and propose something, but represent us all, have a, you know, reach the best agreement that the two of you can think of.
I'd be open to that. That's an idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Palmer.
So, it sounds to me like the issue, the one issue that we have right now is just how to frame that location, right? I'm willing to talk about that right now. I don't think it's...
If I may, the reason I made this suggestion is if, for the ultimate wordsmithing, I mean, if all seven of us are gonna, you know, try and come up with the best choice of words, it's just gonna be a little harder than if...
Well, just a matter of who wants it to say west of Piazza and who wants it to say five oh eight, whatever, third.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I mean, I agree with Ms. Palmer. I think at this point, you know, really the only thing that was the question was just the terminology, and I would propose that we use the street addresses for both locations for the most clarity. I suppose it's possible that some people wouldn't even know that there was a library over the river, so it might be both, in both cases, it might be good that there was.
Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Brier made that statement, I see one of the lead proponents of the initiative shaking his head. So, there's obvious disagreement with that, and I would agree with it because, again, you know, there is a population of individuals who they understand the issue. They've been inundated with it. They've been a part of it. But there's a population out there who, they don't. And if we're gonna create the right language and the right information on the ballot, it has to take that population into consideration also.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, I think we've all agreed to take out the cost. If we take that cost out, then there is enough words left in there, as I remember, to put in this, leave it as the, over the river, two twenty or whatever it is, Mill Street, and add in west of the Piazza and that address, and then make, then the only change, and I think we've all agreed to the changes, is in the last sentence. And if Zeneta makes those, we should be able to do that next week. And I'd also propose, 'cause I can read the council pretty good, it's gonna go on the ballot, so why don't we vote to put it on the ballot tonight? And then approve, just, then all we do next week is approve the ballot title and the resolution, and I would so move that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and we place the, that council approved moving the topic to a ballot. Further discussion, Mr. Prince.
I was just gonna agree. I was gonna agree with Dawn. I think that, Mr. Person, I think if we have the Donmore Mount out and we're able to put the addresses in, we're having, we're being fair to all parties involved. I think that's what we're striving for here.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I just?
Just a second. Ms. Brier.
Yes. I guess I think it's still, I mean, yes, it's gonna go on the ballot, but I'm not comfortable with all the descriptions yet and before I put it on the ballot, vote to put it on the ballot. So, I would feel better having Zeneta go ahead and do her work and come to us with what those recommendations are so that we're all confident that it says what it needs to say when we put it on the ballot.
Ms. Palmer.
Well, I guess I was gonna ask for clarification. I'm still, I'm a little confused as to, am I understanding right that we'll have, since we can take out the price?
It gives us twelve words.
Pardon?
It gives us twelve words.
So, would that be enough, that in the concise statement, we would put addresses? And then where they check, one of them, it would say west of Piazza or Cedar River? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's a good question.
Yeah. Because if I'm not understanding this...
Concur.
Although, maybe I'm just tired.
I'm sorry, taking out the approximate, at the approximate cost of X saves us, I believe it was twelve words. And I'm looking for, and I'm not finding really quickly, the addresses to see how many words that that would give us, because here's what I heard, this might not be what you intended, but here's what I heard, that we have west of the Piazza, perrens, blankety-blank, South Third, closed perrens, and existing library over the Cedar River, perrens, two-hundred Mill Avenue, closed perrens.
In the concise.
In the concise statement. And I think we, I think...
Getting a lot of concurrence with that.
Yeah, it's five oh eight South Third Street, so that's four words. This is me on my mobile again. That's four words, and I don't know, I think it's two-hundred Mill Avenue, south? So, that's four words. So, that's eight words. So, we should have enough words if that's what you folks are talking about. But keeping in mind that I did want to go back and add some of what Mr. Avery had suggested about the alternative future use, alternative future public use, and adding the word building. So, I have to go back and count the words. I think we have enough words.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes. I, there's nothing I would do to create a delay of getting this on the ballot. I think it should, it should get to the ballot as quickly as possible. However, I wanna go on the record as saying that I think we're overcomplicating something that in my mind is a little bit easier. I think it's pretty simple. You know, I don't think that, we've been using Big Five, the petitioners had Big Five site on their petition and was successful in getting it certified by King County Elections. I think that we're kinda complimenting it, complicating it a little bit by, you know, parsing these words about west of Piazza. I believe that's going to be confusing for someone who really doesn't understand what's been going on. And not in that they don't know the current site. I think that for those people who are wanting to base their decision on, what am I gonna get? Where's it gonna be at? What does the location look like? They're not gonna have the visual when you refer to west of the Piazza. As one of the people mentioned, Rainier Avenue is west of the Piazza. But that being said, I'll go along with my colleagues to get this on the ballot because to me, that's the paramount thing, and that's the most important thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Wicker.
Yeah. I don't have any problem with Mr. Person's and the current motion that we've got going to approve the ballot tonight. I also don't have any problem waiting till next week and just having it all wrapped into one. To address Mr. Taylor's comments on the Big Five, no, the petition doesn't have Big Five in it that the people signed, and there is a Big Five in Grady Way, a block from here. So, the level of confusion on Big Five is huge. I think that we've freed up an extra four words for Zeneta for the last sentence, and we still use the descriptive term, which I, you know, I favored the west of Piazza Cedar River Library location because it's descriptive to the people that are talking about the library over the Cedar River, but I think when you put in the physical addresses, it's there. And then our next step would be to say, what are we gonna do about the explanatory statement? And I think that we can conclude these motions and announce the administration, and perhaps we could be specific about any of those gray areas that we wanna make sure we see in an explanatory station, statement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Just to respond to Mr. Wicker, there's an old Big Five site. It has a long history within the city, a lot more history than the new Big Five site, which is on Grady Way, and certainly the address does separate those two. So, I, you know, again, you know, I'll stand by my statement that I believe that this could be done a little bit better. But for the sake of getting this on the ballot, I will go along with my colleagues.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I think as wordsmithing goes, I think that's probably gonna, close to consensus as we're gonna be able to achieve. I just had one other comment as we talk about pro... I just had one other comment, as we talk about pro-con, you know, we're really not gonna be talking about a pro statement and a con statement, we'll be talking about a pro Piazza location statement and a pro Cedar River location statement. So, those will be the two committees I think we're talking about.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Just a clarification on the longer descriptive, and when that was due?
May 15th.
May 15th, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Suppose I should probably close the public meeting? So, I move to close the public meeting?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that we close the public meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting's closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I could also get indulgence and maybe the nods from the council. If next week we have the resolution's final draft of the ballot and that type of thing to go over, we'll do that in unfinished business, as long as everybody agrees with that. Also, if we could ask the administration to present, not the explanatory statement, I'm not gonna make you draft of that right now, but the plan on timing and that type of stuff, and how we would put together the explanatory statement, and then anybody, at that point, we could discuss things we'd like to see in it. At that point, we could discuss things that we feel are important to be contained in the explanatory statement, so kind of give you your charging orders next week. You guys present us a timeline, and we'll tell you what we'd like to see in it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, which is of appeal. Mr. Prince?
Yes, the Planning and Development Committee has committee report.
Planning and Development Committee Report, May Creek Drainage Appeal. The Planning and Development Committee recommends to City Council that it concur with the hearing examiner's recommendation to deny without prejudice King County's application for critical areas and a special permit for grade and fill. The Planning and Development Committee finds no error of fact or law in the hearing examiner's hearing decision or decision on reconsideration. Specifically, based on the record and the properly admitted arguments at the hearing, King County has failed to demonstrate to the city's satisfaction that there will be no significant impact on the property of Renton citizens as a result of King County's work upstream. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, thanks, Mr. Prince. Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I had a long one tonight, but I think I'll save it for... Thank you.
Okay. Well, you have someone sign up for audience comment. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes. Joseph Howard. Did I get the last name correct?
Kind of him out.
Okay, we wore him out. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have ten items on the consent agenda for council consideration. Are there any items the council member would like polled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I'd like to poll item J, please.
J?
Yes.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move that the council concur with the consent agenda minus item J.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the consent agenda minus item J. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the administration asked that if I could poll item J, it'll be resubmitted at a later time, so no action is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
I do not believe I have any unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has one report, two reports, excuse me.
Finance Committee Report, Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on April 16, 2012, claim vouchers 311141 through 311501, three wire transfers, and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments, totaling $6,625,514.2, and payroll vouchers include 749 direct deposits and 58 payroll checks totaling $1,652,785.74. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge and Habitat Project Grants. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize application to the Recreation and Conservation Office for funding assistance from the Aquatic Lands Enhancement Account for $500,000, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund for $500,000. Funding assistance will be utilized for capital improvements at Riverview Park, and include removing the existing bridge structure and creosote treated pilings, and installing a new steel bridge structure and concrete abutments, habitat restoration, and one new interpretive sign focusing on salmon. The committee further recommends that the resolutions regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
No unfinished business. Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have two resolutions and two ordinances for first reading.
The first resolution regards the application for grant on the aquatic land enhancement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing application for funding assistance for an aquatic lands enhancement account project to the Recreation and Conservation Office as provided in Chapter 79.90.245 WAC 286 and subsequent legislation. This is the Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge and Habitat Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
Move that council concur in the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council adopt the resolution as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution is for the second grant for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing application for funding assistance for Water and Land Conservation Fund Grant to the Recreation and Conservation Office as provided in Title 16 USC, Chapter 4601-4, as amended, WAC 286, and subsequent legislative action, Riverview Park Pedestrian Bridge and Habitat Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for first reading regards school district impact fees. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 41160 of Chapter 1 Administration and Enforcement of Title 4 Development Regulations of City Code, setting the school impact fee at $3,568 per new single-family home in the Issaquah School District, retaining the school impact fee of $5,486 per new single-family home, and $3,378 per new multifamily home in the Kent School District, setting the school impact fee at $6,392 per new single-family home, and $1,274 per new multifamily home in the Renton School District, and adopting the capital facilities plans of the Issaquah, Kent, and Renton School Districts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Prince, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, ordinance for first reading regards the water leak adjustment policy revision. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 8446 of Chapter 4 Water, and Section 8523 of Chapter 5 Sewers of Title 8 Health and Sanitation of City Code, revising the city's leak adjustment policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this ordinance be put on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. First is Committee of the Hall, which will be Monday, April 23rd, beginning at 5:30 PM, in the Council Conferencing Center, and that is, has two items, regional issues and legislative wrap-up. The other thing I need to announce is a special meeting for April 30th, 2012, our usual fifth Monday. It'll be a council, excuse me, council workshop, taking place in the Conferencing Center, where we will discuss the business plan for approximately four hours. And many of you may have noted, I have not said what time that is starting, because I'm not positive. We discussed this in Committee of the Hall or at our retreat, excuse me, previously, and the thought was later in the afternoon slash evening, replacing the council meeting. Again, four hours' time, I'm proposing a four o'clock start time. Am I seeing nods and agreement? I'm seeing nods and agreement. I see a big smile from Don Person. 4:00 PM, April 30th, is the council workshop in the Conferencing Center.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
I have nothing to announce.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
No new business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I do. The Community Services Committee will meet next Monday, that's April 23rd, from 5:00 to 5:30. And there are just two items on the agenda. One is the RAC appointment of Mr. Kegley, and the second is memorial signs on city streets. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee will be canceled on, through the 23rd.
Okay.
As all.
Thank you. Next is audience comment. Is there anybody who didn't get a chance to address the council that would like to address the council? Okay, see, come on up to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record. So, council, while she's coming up, we can see that other people want to have a second bite at the apple. Do you have any objections?
My name is Francine Seiberts. The last name is spelled S.I.V. as in Victor, E.R.T.S. And I've listened to the comments, pro and con. One of the things I'm very concerned about this library is that it is over a river, it has load capacity problems, and I'm worried, when you start to remodel this library, if it does go through, if you get to a point where you're gonna have to vacate the library because they can't work on the floor and increase the load capacity of the floor, what are your plans going to be? Let's say your cost ended up running 12 million, and where's, where's this extra money gonna come from? Let's hypothetically, you got 9 million to do this project, and now we're gonna have maybe costs where we don't know if the environmental impact says if you're gonna increase the load capacity of the building, some areas only have 60 pounds per square foot in the middle, that's why you can't put any books in there. The only person, or the only place that really can support the books is that, which is on the land. So, I'd say two-thirds of the library is floating. And so, if you're going to increase the capacity for the library to also have books in other areas and so forth, what are you gonna do if they say you have to vacate the premises? The plumbing has to be completely redone, I understand, what are you gonna do, close the, what are you, you have to consider what costs could come into play there? And also, could the environmental agencies say, if you're gonna work over the river and you're gonna do anything with the structure underneath the building of the library, are we going to need an environmental impact statement, which could run a portion? So, I don't know. By not putting in the prices, are the voters going to be surprised down, further down the road, that we need to all of a sudden come up with an extra $3 or $4 million?
Mr. Mayor?
So, I'm very concerned about that, and you have to, and this is, I've read a lot about this library. And also, it's very cold, because it sits over the river. It's ice, you know, the heating's been a problem, the electrical's a problem, the air conditioning's a problem, everything in the building is a problem. What are you gonna do if they say we have to move, in order to work on this area, we have to close this part of the library completely? What are you gonna do when that's all the book section, or if it's all the li... You know, it could go into problems you'll never even imagine. And this is where your soft costs come into play, your unexpected costs. So, I would like to ask the council members to really be worried about these things and what's gonna happen when you try to work on the full structure, the floor structure, and what could end up, what are your, what are your emergency tactics going to be to relocate the books? Maybe it's gonna be months, you don't know. So, it's my understanding, you can't just move sections of books around the library, it won't support it. In order to work on one section or whatever, they may say we need to work on all sections. So, it's gonna be an issue right there, you know, it's like, it's, it's a bridge, as far as I'm concerned, with big potential problems for, this is the current age of environmental impact statements, and I know because I worked in commercial insurance business for over 30 years. And the key to a lot of these problems is when you do have to do the environmental impact statements, and you really can't even give them the answer of what's going to be happening when you go in there. You don't know if you're gonna have to have the Army Corps of Engineers come in there to help you. You don't know what's going to happen. So, I strongly want the panel, and I mean, the council members, to think about this. Don't, don't have the people coming back to you and saying, but why didn't you say there's going to be a difference in cost, now you want an extra $4 million? So, I think it's a hidden factor that you need to address before you put this out to vote. I certainly wouldn't want to vote on it and then get told, ooh, ooh, we have a problem. And ooh, ooh, we don't, we're gonna close the library for a couple of weeks. You know, so these are things to consider, and that's all I wanted to say, and I thank you for listening to me, but I am a concerned citizen.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, if I could just offer up a quick response. Tonight, the gentleman from the Robinson Group was here, who spoke to the cost of the renovation for the Cedar River site. There's also a report that is out from Swanson Seifugee that speaks to the seismic work that would be done. And he made it clear tonight, Mr. Robinson, the Robinson Group, that that $10.1 million would sufficiently take care of all of the seismic work that needs to be done. And the area that you speak about, which is that 60, you know, pound per square inch portion of the center of the library, where currently they have the computers, et cetera, that would be brought up to 100 pounds per square foot. And, so all of the seismic retrofits would be made, there'd be a new HVAC system, there'd be new electrical, all of those issues would take place. The unknown right now, that I say that, to speak to your concern about what would happen during all of this construction, I don't know. That piece right now, don't know whether or not there's gonna be another facility that would be temporarily used, temporarily used, or what.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I just wanted to point out that in the numbers that we were given by the Robinson Company, they put in a line item, $400,000 to relocate the library for approximately a year while the construction was being done. Thank you.
Mark Martinez, Renton Highlands, again. I feel like doing a jig, because I, we think we're doing a really good, really good progress here, and I want to thank the council for, you know, taking the petition and the concerns of the citizens and making it turn, turning into something real, which is a ballot. So, I really appreciate all your work on that. into something real, which is a ballot. So I really appreciate all your work on that. The language is fine, you know, the little minute things, nobody's ever going to agree on the definition of what is-is. So I think that's really, really good point. I think we did a really good job on that. I do want to, again, back to the point I made earlier, now we have the husband and wife who are going to be arguing on the location for a while. And so let's not spend money on continuing developing costs and developing engineering schematics and all of these different things now, because again, it's our money, regardless of who, who makes the final decision in six months, it's still our money. So let's, let's be wise with it and use our fiduciary responsibilities and kind of slow down and put the brakes on any further development and designing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman?
Yeah, I know it's late. I'll just respond real, real fast. I think Mr. Martinez makes a good point. I'm sure others are thinking about it. I just wanted to say, I think there's also a counterbalancing effect that we have design teams out there that are, you know, in the middle of work. There's, my experience is that often when you try and turn off a team like that, they, they don't have their next job scheduled for a while, and there's contract provisions that'll say you severed the contract and now we owe them. So I get it that there's some, some work which would have to progress and get to a logical stopping point. I would just, I would just ask, I think the spirit of the comment is to, to try and be cognizant that we don't start some new major phase that might not make sense depending on how that vote comes out.
I assure you, we won't be putting up any walls until the vote is completed.
Thanks.
Thank you again, council, Mr. Mayor, Assistant City Attorney. To be brief, I know this has been another long night and another long week for you guys, so.
Please state your name again.
Stuart Avery, A.V.E.R.Y., Renton resident. So it might to understand then that you moved to put this on a ballot? So the campaign is on, we can start putting signs up, is that correct? And that's going to be the August 7th ballot?
We're certainly, we're certainly aiming at the August 7th ballot.
King County Council still has to approve it.
That is correct. We, we still have to, we still have to put together the resolution and send it on, and it still needs the approval of, of King County elections.
Okay, so next week will be?
Next week is our action that then sends it on to King County.
Okay, great. And then the second, the second question I have is to the Assistant City Attorney. You mentioned that there's going to be a three and three pro and pro statement for, in one location, statement for another location. Is it my understanding correct that the petitioning party is to be invited to be a part of the pro for the action that they want to have happen?
There's no, there's no indication that I saw in the statute that dictates who has to be invited, but I know that the city clerk typically has a formula that she uses, you know, a methodology that she uses because it is her responsibility to, to try to identify people to, to speak to either side of the issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Stuart, I'm sorry, if I may interrupt you just for a moment to get clarification from, we do not draft the pros and cons statement. The city's involvement is simply to help find the groups that do that, so I just wanted to make.
That is correct. We do not, we do not play any part in the pro or con, or pro-pro in this situation. The, our only responsibility, or that is mandated by statute, is that we, Bonnie, has to identify the committee members.
Thank you. Sorry, Stuart.
Okay, no, thank you very much, that's clear. I just want to go on record as saying that I would hope that, that the city clerk would consider the spokesperson for the petitioning group to be part of that three-person team. So I'll put that on record. Thank you very much.
I'm David Beeden, Renton resident, last name is B.E.E.D.O.N. Two things. One is, with, with all these dates being mentioned, it gets a little confusing. I would suggest that someone, maybe the Assistant City Attorney, but I don't know who, could draw up a simple flow chart, a timeline, if you will, showing the important dates that have, that actions must be taken by the council, or the city attorney's office, or anybody else, to make all this happen with that August 7th date out at the end in bright red or something like that. To me, coming from my experience as a schedule planner, that really tells me everything in a nutshell. It's just a suggestion. And the other thing is concerning the possible closure of the library, if it, the Cedar River Library Building, if it is remodeled, that wouldn't be the end of the world. I live up in the southeast corner of the city, and I often patronize the Fairwood Library. And wouldn't you know, the King County Library System had the gall to completely close that thing down for months to remodel it. And the world did not come to an end. So I think, although it's a valid concern having a library closed for a period of time, whether it's six weeks or a year, it's something that people could endure. And as someone mentioned, that the cost estimates for updating that building included 400,000 or something like that, for a temporary substitute library to take up the slack. That's all. Thank you.
Judy Toddback again. With all the cons that I've heard about the library, some people have even told me that because of the humidity in the library, because of the river running under it, that the books will be, will have mildew and mold on them. And I've always responded, I've never had that happen. Have you? I, I mean, and I've heard this more than once, so I don't know where they're dreaming this stuff up. It'd be a good idea to pause in this process of design and permitting. You could get into a lot of trouble later on if this continues. Just a suggestion. I have also a suggestion for revitalizing downtown. This is a great idea to start with. And open that, open that remodeled garage, the event center. It's never open. And, you know, I have some ideas about what's kind of current with kids, and that's robotics. And of course, Legos have always been a great toy for kids. And I don't know if you saw on the MSN homepage that, that a group of people put together, grownups, by the way, put together a full-size Ford truck out of Legos. So it's, it's really not age-related, it's, it's for all ages. You could get something going that would appeal to the children of this Renton. Robotics and Legos are what I suggest. Thanks.
Phyllis Forrester, F-O-R-I-S-T-E-R, Renton. The PSI for the stacks is exactly what they should be. I researched it myself when Mr. Potasik said it informed one day, one time that, that the stack, that there wasn't the right, correct PSI in the library for stacks. And it is correct for the stacks. It's correct for the middle of it, it's correct for the other end of it. So that is not a correct assumption to, I guess if you want to move all the stacks to the middle of the library, that might, but that's not the case. KCLS, and I know this for a fact, has set up temporary libraries several times when they have been remodeling libraries. And then, as he said, in the case of Fairwood, they just simply closed it. And they will be doing that again with Fairwood, not too distant future. They're just simply going to close it. So we can have a temporary library, and we can have probably in that building next door that the city owns and is quite empty. So, thank you.
Hi, Beth Asher. I just actually have a question, and I don't know if you all know the answer yet. Did we finish the schematic design phase? We saw the drawings, and the drawings would indicate that we're at the detailed cost estimate for the schematic design phase, which is where in the ILA it calls for the city to approve or reject the final design. And there are three or four points in there where you can debate, there's wiggle room, the process can be halted. I would urge you to take this time that you get and kind of stop the process because really, we're not for wasting the taxpayer's dime. And like Mark said, it is the taxpayer's dime, and it's going to be my kid's dime and my grandkid's dime, regardless of whether we say KCLS or, you know, the city. It's all coming out of the taxpayer pocket. And they're not too deep right now. So if you are at that phase, if you're at the end of schematic design and you're going to have your review, please consider seriously debating and halting the process. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I have been advised that the schematic design, there was some completion last week, but they're still, they're going through the, the cost analysis portion right now. So there, we're several weeks away from getting to the point where we can begin the final design. So you're accurate in that some of the schematic design work is done, but there's still the cost estimate portion that's being worked on right now.
Jeanne Green Crook, G.R.E.E.N.E.-C.R.O.K. Just wanted to make one more comment here. We need to use our resources if they do keep the library down there. Like they said, 2,000 or 200 Mel Street is a viable option for us to use. Also, it has lots of parking. It has much more parking than you're going to find downtown. For somebody to stop by and drop off a book, or if they're just passing through to go to the library, we do have parking there. And then to get back to the, the name of the building, I really feel strongly that it should say the former Big Five location and the Cedar River Library, because that really is what it says it's all about. So, thank you.
Kathleen Ossenkopf, Renton resident for over 40 years, spelled O-S-S-E-N-K-O-P. And I'm just here to speak about signage. And you may not know, or maybe you do know, that there are three signs currently on the old Big Five location, or the location 508 South Third Street. I photographed them today, and someone put them up on the exterior of the building so high that the person used a ladder, because you cannot reach the signs from standing on the street. And speaking about signs, I believe that...
What is the sign?
What is the sign? The signs posted on the building say, "We support the new library." Or downtown, yeah, campaign signs are posted on the Big Five Building, the old Big Five Building, at present, three of them. And I would like to encourage a banner at each location, so that whatever you decide to put on the ballot, that banner would say that on the Big Five, old Big Five location, some type of a banner, and also the same kind of a banner at the over-the-river library location. So that if people decide to route and look at these locations, look it up on their GPS, plug in those, during the campaign, they can plug in those addresses and go look at the sites, they will know exactly, because there'll be a banner there that says, "This is the site of ballot major such and such." Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name's Nicola Robinson, and I live in Renton. Do you need my address?
No, that's fine.
Most people probably understand by now that the timeline for processing of the Big Five site, what was the Big Five site, is continuing with permitting, and there's a timeline that's available on the internet. So I'm just interested to know if the initiative that is not on the ballot until November, what are all the implications of that in terms of the cost, the initiative, which we hope is binding, but we don't know if it's advisory? So all the implications of that in terms of pushing that process down the road and continuing? So really, that's, that's a pretty straightforward question. I'm not sure if you have any answers to that.
We don't. So well, the council?
We adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Person. Are we adjourned? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
But when the community actually started to engage and start to talk to one another, people of color and diversity talking about different social issues, I saw a potential here.